We have the meeting start just as soon as we have a fourth member. We need four to start the meeting, to have a quorum. But to give you a little bit of information, we have two members that will be absent. So we're going to be working with a five-member board. And one of those members is going to be about an hour late. So when we do begin, we're going to start with four-member board. Now, in the rules, where you need to get all four votes in order to get your appeal pushed through. It can't be three to one, or it can't be two to two. It has to be four to oh. So what we're going to do when we get to the start of the meeting, if some people feel that they want to wait until later in the proceedings, so we have a fifth member here, we'll hear your request to move yours back. But we are going to start it with four members, and you'll need to get your appeal through with four votes. So are there any questions about that from anybody? Okay.
About to...
No, I just want to do this.
the door right now. Good afternoon, and welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines Zoning Board of Adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law on the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to hear requests for various and exceptions in the regulations in the zoning ordinance, conditional use permits, and appeals from the decision of the staff and the administration of the zoning ordinance, and to make decisions in such matters. This is an open and informal meeting; it's currently being recorded. The board members have received a copy of the agenda, staff report, and recommendations. Copies of these are available in the tray on my left by the front door. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to be working with a five-member board. We're going to start with four. Two members that will not be here will be Jake Christiansen and Tom Clark, Sr. So I'm going to introduce the members that will be here. On my far right is Brooks Rosenberg. Next to him is Cindy Smith. And on my left will be Mel Penns. Next to him will be Linda Westergaard. My name's Bill Gray. Representing City Legal, on my left is Michael Kelly. Representing City Staff, we have Eric Lundey, City Planner, Bert Drost, City Planner, Sue Ann Donovan, Zoning Enforcement Officer, and Emmanuel Teribio, City Planner. The board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case is identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by the board, demonstrate that the criteria established by law for granting the relief have been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the relief. All speakers are requested to focus their comments upon those facts to demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law have been satisfied. Each appeal will be announced in order, and the staff will present a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the board or otherwise identified. All speakers are requested to speak from the podium on my right here, and begin their presentation by giving both their name and address. The applicant or representative of the applicant is allowed to speak first, and will be allowed 10 minutes to present their appeal. Anyone else present in support of the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. Anyone present in opposition to the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. The applicant then will be allowed three minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments. The meeting will then be closed to public comment, and the board will deliberate the request and make a decision. If your appeal is approved, we ask that you wait until tomorrow to go to the Permit and Development Center to apply for any building permits. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed, and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or a member of the board requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The decisions of this board can only be appealed to the Polk County District Court. If you believe you have been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedies to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. If you have cell phones on out there, if you turn them off, or at least put them on vibrate, they're kind of disruptive to the process here. We will be probably taking a short break around the 3:00 or 3:30 timeframe if we need to. As I said, we are going to start with a four-member board. So the first thing, as I mentioned, we have a consent agenda, and we have a request from staff on item 12, Bert. You want to give us a little...
Item number 12 is a request for an electronic sign on Park Avenue for a mini warehouse facility under construction. Staff's recommended approval. We feel that it's a minor enough appeal that it could be moved to the consent agenda if the board's comfortable with that.
Okay. Is there anybody here that's here to speak against item number 12? Okay. I'd entertain a motion to move item 12 to consent agenda.
I'll move.
Got a second? Thank you. Been moved in second. If all is in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries four to nothing. So now what we're going to do is we're going to go through the three, or now four, items in the consent agenda. First one is item one, and it's an exception at 1611 47th Street. Item two is an exception at 650 18th Street. And item three is an exception in variance at 5327 Southeast 40th Street. Of these, and item 12, variance at 5295 Park Avenue. Is there anybody here to speak against the items that I just read off? Everybody on the board comfortable with them? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept consent agenda.
I would make the motion that we accept the consent agenda for items one, the exception, item two, an exception, item three, exception and variance, and item number 12, a variance.
I'll second.
The staff recommendations.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. Been moved in second. If all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to nothing. So if you're here for items one, two, three, or 12, they've been approved. You're welcome to sit and watch your city government at work, but you're been approved, and we appreciate your time. Thank you. Bert, you want to bring up item eight?
Yeah. Number eight.
Okay.
All right. Board members of the, or chair members of the board, item number eight has requested that they be moved to the front of the agenda. They have a flight to catch later this afternoon, so I think we could do this item pretty quickly. We did get a letter from the Neighborhood Association this morning in support of it. So I guess if the board is okay with moving this up...
Is the applicant here too?
Yeah, he is.
Okay. And you want to move it up?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to move it to the first item on the public hearing agenda.
I'll move.
Oh, sorry. I'm remembering the letter. I'll second.
Thank you. Been moved in second. To move the item to the first on the public hearing agenda, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to nothing. So we'll hear item eight first, and then move into the regular public hearing agenda.
Item number eight is the Cornerstone Credit Union. It's located on the west side of 61st Street, just north of Grand Avenue. There's McDonald's to the west, and a La Bamba Mexican restaurant to the south. The credit union actually has the west part of the building right here. Since there's another commercial tenant between the credit union and the frontage, they actually don't have any occupant frontage on the street, so they only earn two square feet of signage, which for a credit union earning two square feet, or being limited to two square feet really does create a hardship. They have put up some signs. This first one is on the south side of the building. It's visible from Grand Avenue. It's located at the southeast corner of the building. And they've also put two on the north side of the building that directs people from the parking lot. And then they've also put two on dumpster, the dumpster enclosure doors within the parking lot, two four-by-six signs. This is a photo from Grand Avenue that shows the sign that they have on the south facade that gives them visibility along Grand Avenue. This photo here is from 61st Street, which shows the signs really aren't that visible from the residential area to the north. The consent map, we only had cards come back and support pass these cards around. And then that letter of support from the Waterbury Neighborhood Association. The staff, we felt they definitely have a hardship for, I'm only being allowed to have two square feet of signage. So we've recommended approval, but we did recommend that they remove the two signs from the dumpster doors. And we didn't feel that those were necessary, but yeah, that's these two doors, or these two signs here on the dumpster doors. So we've recommended approval just of their other three signs and the denial of these two. Any questions?
Thanks, Bert. Applicant or representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon. Thank you for moving my schedule up. I appreciate it. I'm Gary Key. I'm CEO of Cornerstone Community Credit Union. We formerly were Yonkers Credit Union, residing in the downtown building. Moved to this location in 2004, and up until six months ago, we were what was called, what is called a closed credit union, that being mostly an employee group, and that was with Yonkers and other affiliated stores. Since that point, and the fact that Yonkers has gone through a number of changes, our growth really stems from local growth. We have members in 30 states, but we are focusing on local growth, and in order to do that, we applied to the state and received a charter to go community, meaning that anyone that lives or resides in the Des Moines community or Des Moines metro area would be eligible to join. As a result of that, we had some smaller signing in the past, and we had basically no signing on the back at one point. If you're driving down Grand, even the fire department didn't know that we were there, and they even recommended that we put up a little bit more, well, larger address letters and also signage, so that in case of emergency, they would be able to easily locate. We're off of 61st and Grand, but you have to turn into between Herndon's and La Bamba, and then go into parking lot, and we're located there. Our members always knew where we were, and that was not an issue. But now that we're community, we feel that we need the signage to be able to have people be able to locate us. And since we put up the sign in the back, we've probably added four or five members in that period of time just from seeing the sign. So we do think it is beneficial to our business. The signs that are on the dumpsters were put up mainly just because we're on the west side of the building with our tenant. We own the building, but when you go in, it's not exactly obvious which left or right side is ours. So we put those up to identify that we're at that end of the parking lot. Those are not essential in terms of identification from the street. The ones that are on the building are the ones that are most essential, and that's the ones we're most concerned about. So I would certainly appreciate your support on that. We did get the support of the Waterbury Neighborhood Association Board, Herndon Nursery, La Bamba. I think other businesses that are in there have no objections to the signing that we currently have. We don't have plans for any additional signing or different signing. That's the signing that we're looking at, is the pictures that you saw. So we feel very strongly that it is a benefit to our attracting new membership. We obviously have a website, and we do other marketing efforts to get new members, but they need to know where to find us. So your support is greatly appreciated, and I will entertain any questions or comments.
Mr. Key, you say that you don't have any problem taking the dumpster signs down?
Well, I would prefer to leave them up because, I mean, they are, they're the same logo that we have. They're smaller. They're 30 inch by six foot, I believe. And they're, there's two gates that open, and we've got one on each gate. I mean, when you pull in the parking lot, it's very obvious that, okay, Cornerstone Community Credit Union is at the end, and we're, then you start, then you see the signs on our building. I would prefer to leave them there. I know the staff did recommend that those not be approved, but if there's any way possible that you could see those to be approved, I would be most appreciative of that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Anybody have any last questions for staff? Hearing them, we'll go close the public portion, go to board decision.
I would move staff recommendations.
Are they denying everything? Are they...
Excuse me. Well, they're asking for denial of the variance. That's staff's recommendation.
The staff's recommendation?
Well...
An amended approval?
The amended, yeah.
Okay.
And the staff recommending that both the dumpster signs come down? Is that correct?
Um...
I think, I think that...
I don't...
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see it in here, Bert, so...
Our recommendation was that they be able to keep the three signs that are posted on the building itself, and then remove the two that are on the dumpster. Maybe it's not where they...
Can Bert kind of help explain what their, what their opposition is to having them on the dumpster? Is it because there's two of them, or...
Well, we understand that there's clearly need to have some signage more than the two square feet that they're allowed. We just thought having five signs is maybe excessive, because typically if it were zone C2 or some more intense commercial, they would still only be allowed two signage, so we felt allowing them to have three was, would be adequate rather than the five that they've requested.
And is this entire parking lot for the credit union?
There are two tenants.
Yeah.
And...
The other side's another business.
Okay.
And they, just as a comment, they require no signing. They have no walk-in traffic at City View, and they, it's only their staff that works there. So they do not ever plan to put the sign anywhere on the building other than the address. And they, they use, of course, with the parking lot, we, it basically happened to happen in part of the parking lot, but those, the dumpster and those two signs are at the very far west end of the parking lot.
Well, the concern I would have about the dumpster signs is that if a business besides City View moved in there, and it might be confusing for folks if they, if this other business needed signage, and then we had approved signage for the dumpsters, and it could potentially create some issues.
I think the signage for the dumpster was just a more directional, the way I take it. Is there a way to do that differently under the code, Bert? I mean, this way with an arrow, or...
If it was just, if it just had an arrow and said this way, then we wouldn't call it, we'd call that a directional sign, but since it has their logo and their name on it, then the zoning ordinance would consider it a sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hmm. If it has, if it's strictly directional, that's directional, but if it has any type of logo or name recognition, then it's a sign, correct?
Right.
So if it says building, building entry and an arrow, then it would be okay.
Right.
Okay.
And they wouldn't need relief from us for that?
Correct.
Okay.
Even if it said like credit union entrance?
That'd be fine?
As long as it's not their name, credit union.
Okay.
Yeah, our recommendation was approval of an amended appeal to have 81 square feet over the allowed two square feet, and then a variance of two signs over the allowed one sign.
But you didn't address the two dumpsters?
Well, they asked for having variants of four signs over the allowed sign, over the allowed one sign. So we recommended just a variance of two over the allowed one instead.
Okay.
I'm clerk.
We got a motion on right now to accept staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay. I think what I'm hearing is if, on the dumpster signs, if you can work out something that doesn't have your logo on, you can probably still keep them out there. It's something that we wouldn't even be voting on, so I'd recommend that you talk to staff on that and see what is allowable.
I'll be more than happy to do that.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to nothing. So hopefully we got good compromise. Thank you. Now, as I mentioned earlier, we have, everything has to be a four-o vote until we get one more member in, and then it can be a four-to-one vote. Is there anybody that wants to wait and push themselves back? One by one, if you would come up, just line up there and tell me who you are, and we'll push you in the back.
Afternoon. Attorney Brian Nelson upon the applicant for Aerie Bell Bonds. It's applicant, excuse me, item 11.
Okay.
Of course, as you stated, there's only four members here. We'd ask to defer it to next month.
That's your other option, yes.
We'd like to defer it to the 27th of February, if that's available.
Okay. Your number 11?
Number 11, sir.
Okay.
Also, in regards to that, the owner of the place in question, who is also the mother of the applicant, who's in favor of the application, is in Texas. Her mother passed away, and she's down there dealing with the estate, so she wasn't able to be here today also. So we'd like to have her come back up.
Okay, if you hold on one second. Got a request to continue this to the February 27th meeting.
I'll move.
Okay, you got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, been moved in second. If all is in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move you to February 27th.
Thank you, guys.
Good afternoon. My name's Joel Templeman. I'm with the Willis O'Malley Law Firm, and I'm here today on behalf of Natalie Phelps. She's the applicant in item number four. And we would request that our item be continued to the next meeting scheduled for February 27th as well. Now, in this situation, we were before the board December 19th, and this matter was continued till today. We were, quite frankly, excited to present our story today, because I think we did what the board asked us to do in that interim. So by no means are we trying to skirt the issue by seeking our continuance, but due to the number of board members here today, we think it is in our best interest to ask that we be put on the agenda for the 27th of February.
Okay. Legal point, if we had questions, is there anybody here, I should probably hit you on item 11. Is anybody here to speak against item 11 that we just continued to February? Okay. Is there anybody here to speak against item four? Okay. So you want to continue? Brooke, did, did you see this on there?
I did see that letter, and that's what I'm, I'm excited to share that with you folks today.
And you don't think that's good enough, or...
Well, can we wait until Mr. Penn's arrive?
Sure. Yeah, you know, your options are either next month or be heard when Mel gets in here. So if you'd like to sit and just wait till Mel comes...
He should be here soon.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll do that then.
Do that?
We'll wait until Mr. Penn's arrives.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
My name's Lloyd Ogul. I'm attorney, represent Amen LLC, which is item number six on the agenda. We would respectfully request a continuance until there's a greater membership. It's a family-run business. There's a lot on the line on this. We also think it gives us an opportunity to discuss with staff their recommendation. We think there's maybe some issues in there that we should discuss with them, and hopefully impact their recommendation.
Okay. So your request is to wait till we have five members, or continue till next month?
Continue till next month.
Okay. Is there anybody here to speak against item number six? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to continue it to next month.
Got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved in second to move item six to the next meeting, February 27th. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll see you next month.
Michael Cortez, 7695 Southeast 14th. I wanted to see about moving mine to the next month also. There's a couple of things I was reading here that I wasn't aware of.
Which item are you?
Item five.
Five, okay, thanks.
There's a couple of things here I was reading about that I have not, I don't have a site plan I need to come up with.
Okay.
Couple of things, because the board recommendation is denial, so there's a couple of things I'd like to get before I come back.
Sounds great. Anybody here to speak against item number five? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the item number five to be continued to the February 27th meeting.
Are you second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries four to nothing. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Come on.
Chairman Gray, members of the Des Moines Zoning Board of Adjustment, I'm Ben Page, Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm here with the Des Moines Botanical Gardens Group. Their executive directors here with me today, Stephanie and Jutela. We'd like to wait until your fifth member gets here, if that's okay.
Sounds good. What I haven't been, I forgot.
Number seven, please.
Okay. Move to number seven till Mel gets back. Do you hear a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, do you hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll see you shortly, Ben. Thank you. All right, we had a little activity there, folks. Okay, we got item four is continued to February 27th, or no, till Mel gets in. Item five is going to be next month. Item six is going to be next month. That means the first one on here, or number seven is going to be waiting for Mel. Number eight, we've already heard, we're running out of items here, folks.
I'm moving.
Let's go to item nine. Is that the first one you got, Eric?
Available Materials Handling.
That's it?
Yes. And, let's see here. Make sure I didn't get it, I don't think I got any response cards on this, so I don't think I have anything to hand out. So I'll show you that right away. Although I believe there's representation from Kimmon Industries that's here that will probably wish to speak on the matter.
Which item is this?
This is item nine, right?
Right.
Available Materials Handling.
On Southeast...
The subject property is the irregular-shaped piece that you see there in yellow with the hatching. We have actually two separate railroads that kind of converge here, and it's in between those two. South of Scott Avenue, which is a public street from the point of my pen to the east over to Southeast 22nd Street, which is not an improved street, but is their main access down to Mari. So basically, access to this site comes from Mari on the Southeast 22nd and over to Scott Avenue. With master plans for Kimmon Industries, Scott Avenue west of here was vacated fairly recently to allow their expansion to the north. to allow their expansion to the north. This site has an approved site plan for an outdoor storage related to contractors' equipment storage, which is basically storage of roll-off containers, and they have an approved site plan. It's actually under development, so what you see in this is actually different now. They've cleared, cleared the site and they're in the process of grading and improving it based on that approved site plan. I think I have some photos here to give you a sense of what's, this is taken from Scott looking to the southeast, so you can see that there's already some activity going on to, to clear the site and grade it. This is looking from in the site to the northwest, so the railroad to the west of it is along here. At the time, at this time, this is barricaded off to prevent access to the west, what was formerly a public street, Scott Avenue, so. Then this is looking to the east. It's wooded across the other railroad right away that's to the east of the property. The applicant had, had gone through the rezoning process recently and was denied a request to go to M2, which would have allowed them to come in front of you with a conditional use for what they are asking to do. The city council did not approve the rezoning based on concerns about the long-term permanent nature of having M2 adjacent to a food-based industry, which is Kimmon, so they, their feeling at the time was that it could be better regulated through a use variance, which was more specific in nature, as to what the, what the use allowances were. And so now that gave the owner standing in, in order to ask for this use variance to allow the use. I think they're essentially getting to the same point by this process that they were seeking to achieve in the first place. The, the appellant did offer up conditions and has been meeting with the individuals from Kimmon, and I think I went, let me grab that. They, I'm going to pass this around. I'll show it to you quickly first. They are asking that the use located at twenty-one thirty-five Scott will be used to receive unload machinery classified as construction equipment, such as forklifts, backhoes, dozers, scrapers, skid steers, telehandlers, wheel loaders, et cetera. Dismantling and salvage will not take place at this site, except in need of transportation, so there's some large equipment that has to be assembled, disassembled to a point that it can be transported. Reconditioning and salvage will take place at other locations. They have demonstrated they have other locations where they can legally do that activity outside of the jurisdiction of Des Moines. And so that is their plan, that they would transport anything, that they would, reconditioning, I think they have another facility within Des Moines where they can recondition. So they have shown that they have other locations to conduct that activity. They do want to keep what's allowed currently on the property, M1 uses. That's what's allowed their contractor's storage yard. They want to allow this use for the appellant, the principal of the available materials, Tony Holt and his heirs, and cannot be assigned or transferred. They are willing to limit it that any inoperable machinery can only be stored for six months, and that, that's why we're in front, in front of this. It needs M2 because the ordinance calls any inoperable junk or salvage vehicle, so by its, by that definition, it becomes a junk or salvage. And that the storage of inoperable machinery is limited to a three thousand, thirty thousand square foot area marked on the paving in northeast corner, starting after the green space, a hundred feet east to west and three hundred feet north to south. And just to show you what that would entail, on their approved site plan, this is a hundred foot dimension measured from their setback. They still have to provide a ten-foot edge here on the east. They have to have a twenty-five foot setback from the public street, so the three hundred foot depth would begin at this point where that twenty-five foot setback. So all, any inoperables would be limited to this rectangle area here, which is three hundred by one hundred. Staff is recommending that that actually be memorialized on their, their approved site plan as an amendment, so they can have their engineer revise that to adjust and show where that limitation would be for inoperable storage. And then finally, I guess that, that was what the appellant has offered, but I did want to also provide you with a response that we got from representatives of Kimmon, which they did want to make sure that the map drawing was attached with the decision, basically, so that anyone that might buy the property or be thinking of transferring would understand this is a limited area, and also that it's not available for inoperables, except to the, in this case, they use the term lineal descendants. Now, that's a little bit different from heirs, and I'll let you guys discuss that with the applicant and representatives of Kimmon. Staff believes this essentially says the same thing, but we're, we're okay with more, if this language is a little tighter for the comfort of the Kimmon folks that might oppose this. So I'll let the appellant respond to that, and then I believe that the Kimmon representatives will also speak to that. But staff is, this isn't exactly what's in the staff recommendation, but we're also comfortable with it if that's the way.
Eric, I see that was dated the twenty-first. Has Mr. Holt seen that yet, or is this the first time he's seen it?
I think this reflects their discussions Mr. Holt has had with Kimmon.
Okay.
It just may be a difference in how they use their terminology, actually.
Okay.
So this came from Joel Templeman, I think he was here today. Yes, Joel's here.
Okay.
He was here earlier, so I'll let them reflect on that. Going back to the staff report, then, we are recommending approval of this use variance subject to the six conditions that you see on page, or five, I'm sorry, five conditions on page nine and one condition on page thirty-nine and one on forty. Basically, it's taking some of the stuff that was in the communications and breaking it out. One, the use of the property is limited to that list of uses that was indicated by the appellant. Two, only permitted for so long as the property is in continuous operation and good standing by the appellant or their heirs under the conditions of this decision, and I think that's also taken care of by either statement. Lineal descendants is a little more restrictive. Any dismantling and salvage is prohibited, except as necessary for transport. Any reconditioning or salvage will take place at other locations where it's legally permitted. Inoperable machinery may only be stored on premises for a period not to exceed six months. And then any storage of inoperable machinery is limited to a thirty thousand square foot area marked on a paved surface to be located at the northeast corner of the property as designated on the submitted site sketch. And then we're going to require that that be a modification to their site plan on the administrative side. So if you want to make that part of the decision, that's okay, but I think either way, we're going to ask that that be an amendment to their site plan. Are there any questions?
I, I have a question. I'm not sure if Sue Ann needs to answer it, but when, when you mentioned, under, under number five, any inoperable machinery may only be stored not to exceed six months, who's going to manage and control that?
That's a good question. Because that, that also came up earlier at the rezoning stage.
And I, I bet we're going to hear.
Certainly, if the appellant's offering it, we're going to ask that that be a condition. I think that Kimmon was also comfortable with that now. Are you going to respond? Or do you want me, I was going to say?
Chair member of the, of the boards, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement, we would be charged with enforcing it. We would do it on more or less a complaint basis. If we run into trouble, I'm sure Mr. Holt and I can work out a system where he gives us a list of what's there and as it moves in and out, but I don't think we will have that problem with Mr. Holt on this property, but we would, of course, do it if we have to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Brooke?
I guess a question, Eric, that to me, there's a difference between heirs and lineal descents. Can, is somebody, which one do you want in here?
We, we said, we said heirs, as the appellant has indicated, which would be a little more encompassing of other non-family members by blood, I guess. I get, if the, if the appellant is comfortable with lineal descendants, I'll let them, I'll let him answer that question.
Is, is there going to be fencing around this? Is that a requirement? I don't see that under a.
It's not a requirement. I'll let, I'll let the appellant answer that. Because it's surrounded by other industrially zoned property, we don't require screening of that material. They, I guess they would have to screen it from the public street views on the north, so at the, at the north end, they would need something screening any salvage or junk from the public view.
Would that be something you put in on a site plan, then, or do we?
Yeah, it's a site plan requirement. It's, it's an, they would have to ask for variance of that provision.
I think it was on the site plan. It looks like they're planting trees and a bunch of other stuff.
So it, it, it's a partial yes, I guess.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Eric. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
Tony Holt, six oh seven, Southeast Twenty-First Court, or, sorry, the new address, twenty-one thirty-five Scott Street. Give you a little bit of background on this property. It's actually a couple abandoned city streets and some old Rock Island Railroad property. And finally, I've had lots, this is, where's your lot drawing?
Do you want the aerial one or that one?
The, this was Rock Island property. A long stretch is Southeast Twenty-First Street, twenty-five foot stretch, and this is Shaw Street, and this was some old Rock Island Railroad property. So it's taken a bit of work to put this together. We had to buy the street from the city. We had to buy these pieces of property from the Hawkeye Land Company, and we started a cleanup for the owner of the, this property. That's how we acquired it and ended up not paying his bills, so that's how we put this together. Here's a few pictures of what the property looked like. A pile of malts throughout this thing, with a pallet company, and it covered up a lot of, the site with various, these pictures are coming up pretty dark.
They look a little darker on that screen than the screen that they had in front of you.
Yeah. We're in the roll-off business, so we did haul, haul over sixty loads of garbage out of here. There was abandoned trailers and tires and plastic, you know. So we've been on this project for a couple of years. This is the current zoning map. As you can see, we're totally surrounded by dark blue practically.
Go ahead, reverse that around. Not good at reading upside down.
Sorry.
There we go.
That's, so it's, there's, as you can see, there's plenty of heavy use around us, and I think if you go back to, what was it, two thousand and five when you did the rezoning?
Two thousand and five or six, man. Down zone.
This, this piece of property would have been down zoned at that point. On the approved site plan, to answer an earlier question, the approved site plan has an eight-foot metal fence all the way around it, in which we will continue to carry that out. I have no difficulty with either language, whether it's lineal or heirs. I don't see that to be an issue. We buy and sell equipment. We recently had a condemnation of another piece of property. Can you show up on there?
Do you want to look at this area?
Is that big enough to hold? That's not big enough.
Not wide enough? Trying to show where you're at.
Where would they condemn this piece of property? The bypass is coming in about, from the edges, from Scott Street over, what is it, six hundred feet, the new bypass goes by?
Over here?
Hold a book, where it is?
This is it, this area here.
That's the bypass? To give you an idea, that pin will be the overhead bypass, a little further over, about like that. That's the new road passing by, and they condemned a piece of property that we rent at the end of the pin there. So with the condemnation, we had no other spot to move our current inoperable equipment except out of town, which then begins a question of where we finally have business if we can't do it. What we do for business is we buy and sell heavy equipment, forklifts and the list that you have, comes in oftentimes inoperable. We bring it up to our shop, which is just north of where that pin is, and do motors, transmissions, whatever it takes, and we've been approved for a sale lot there. We also have a dismantling lot in Pleasantville on the corner of Highway five and ninety-two that we've gotten rezoned. Well, it was, it was a, it's been a salvage for many years. Some of you might remember truck cabs stacked up as you went down to see the Knoxville races. Well, we've purchased that piece of property and we have a salvage permit down there now, so any dismantling and parts in a major way will take place down there. I don't know if I've covered enough bases here to.
Well, City Legal brought up an interesting question for me. You're running the business as an LLC, correct?
This particular lot, zone is an LLC. Our main corporation's an S corp.
Okay. So, and this will also probably, for Mr. Templeman, how do you have descendants of a corporation?
How are your attorneys sitting next to you?
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Tony. Joel Templeman, Willis O'Malley Law Firm, three seventeen Sixth Avenue Suite three hundred, here on behalf of Kimmon Industries. Kimmon has had numerous conversations with Mr. Holt, kind of going back and forth and figuring out a way to make this work. Kimmon acknowledges that he's done a great job with this property as far as cleaning it up, so it looks a lot better now than it did not too long ago. And Kim is not here to object to his request today, subject to the staff's conditions with those few tweaks that we've added to it in that email from myself to Eric. And now, the way we envision the whole lineal descendant question or issue is that it's our understanding that available material handling is controlled by Tony Holt, the applicant, and we're fine with this use running with him or his lineal descendants, because in prior conversations, correct me if I'm wrong, I think.
I have three boys.
Three sons that would take over or help him with that business, and Kimmon does not have any problem with any of those three individuals doing that. And the easy way around it would be to just name those individuals if we. And the easy way around it would be to just name those individuals if we want to. Anthony Holt, his three sons, and that's it. That's where the use would stop. It's not to be assigned to any other third party. And that was, maybe it was inartfully crafted. It could have been, but.
Oh, you see, see the dilemma?
Oh, I do, I do. Maybe it's, maybe it's better to name those individuals specifically, if that's something that staff would be okay with.
Okay. All right.
And then, and the only other thing, well, I'm up there, so I don't have to get back up again, would be Eric touched on it earlier about an amended site plan to specifically draw out the area that we're talking about, that 30,000 square foot area. And those would be the only two comments that Kemen has to this request.
Okay. I'll be calling you back up in a second anyway.
And I have no difficulty with the site plan. I think you all know that drawing multiple site plans costs multiple dollars. And as soon as approvals through Mr. Walter Pelton, put it in notes and make it happen. That's an issue.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else here to speak in support? So you're kind of in between, between speaking in opposition or? For the record, which way would you be? Are you in support of?
Well, I'm in support of this request, subject to staff's conditions.
Okay.
As amended.
Right. And, and, and Mr. Holt's in agreement there.
Okay.
I think the only thing that we may have to do is, is like Mike said, may want to put in Anthony Holt and name his three sons. That way, we, we just kind of make sure it's legally covered. Brooke? Can you define lineal descents? I mean, to me, it would go down to the grandkids, too.
Well, it's a blood relative versus heirs, which would not have to be a blood relationship.
So it would just be Mr. Holt and his three sons, and then it stops?
That, that's consistent with our discussions with him, yes.
And then, at that point, would the business have to be sold? Is Kemen going, Kemen going to buy it at that point?
That's a question I can't answer.
Well, what does Mr. Holt do at that point? I'm just going to throw it out. I, I would think then it'd become another point that they have to take it back to the Board of Adjustment and say, okay, now these people are gone. They have to come in with a new appeal, I would think. Is that?
That would be the easiest way to do it and certainly what I'd recommend.
Correct, because in the event that Mr. Holt sells the business to a third party, this use ceases. It's not assignable. It doesn't run with the land. It runs with the, the controllers of the, of that business as defined. And the only reason Kemen is so sensitive to this issue, as you all know, it's, they're a food products business and they're, they're subject to various federal regulations and they need to know who their neighbors are and they need to affirmatively protect their own property from, you know, their biggest concern would be any sort of rodent infestation or any other sort of infestation to their property, because then they would lose some of their federal.
From the pictures, Mr. Holt showed it. Looked like the former neighbor was a lot worse than Mr. Holt. What did Kemen do about that?
They just had to increase the security around their perimeter and monitor it more closely, which they continue to do.
Why didn't they buy the land?
I don't know.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any last questions? If there's questions, we'll be talking about them now. Any last questions for staff? So, and you want to say something, too?
As far as the use running with the heirs, I, I think that once Tony's sons pass, if it wants to continue with the use variance, they would, somebody who buys it at that point or comes in as a grandchild would come back to the board. This is a, an agreement that we've worked really hard to get with Kemen and Mr. Holt and the city. It's a good use for the land. It protects Kemen, protects the city, and gives Mr. Holt what he needs. So from an enforcement standpoint, I think this is a, a good way to resolve a lot of different issues that have been going on down there.
Okay.
I did want to also remind the board, this being a use, use variance does get passed up to the council for their consideration of requesting you to reconsider or remanding it for you to reconsider. I don't expect anything there, to be honest with you, but because that was sort of the direction they were of when they denied the rezoning. So I've, I'm confident we can come up with language that ties this to Mr. Holt and his sons, because I know companies change in terms of, you know, if the players are the same, I think we can word it in such a way that we're covering his family, him and his family members and, and take care of that before Bill signs the order, if, if the board approves this.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Eric. Close the public portion and go to board discussion.
I think it's a great plan, and I think everybody should be commended for all working together to make it work. I mean, Kemen's okay with it. They're getting a good neighbor. Mr. Holt's able to do what he needs to do. You know, we don't want him to move this business out of town. He's very limited on the land that he has. Why wouldn't we approve it? I'm just not sure how to make it, how to word it, you know, but I, I would, I just want to see us pass it and incorporate the language that Kemen would like. It doesn't sound like anybody's going to object to that. We can make this work.
Brooke, you have some ideas? What? I'm sorry. You, you were asking how many votes. I just thought maybe you had some ideas that. Well, I'm, I'm not going to vote no, but I, I'm, it feels to me that we're giving a, a neighbor veto power over a, over a piece of land that they don't own. And nothing, no disrespect to Kemen, but I don't understand that. They could have bought the land, I presume. It looked a hell of a lot worse, it looked like, before Mr. Holt got it. And so if they had concerns for health and safety, what, what happened then? I mean, to me, it, it, they're controlling the, the outcome, and I, I don't understand that at all, but I'm not going to vote no.
With that said, then, I would move staff recommendations with the minor amendment that the city and Mr. Holt worked together to incorporate the language that Kemen has suggested, which looks very similar to what we have here, just tweaking it a bit and make it happen. I mean, we have to see a site, a site plan has to be redone, so I, I would make a motion to move staff recommendations with some minor adjustments, as spoken about.
And would that be good enough if we put?
Can you get that?
Yeah.
All right.
Especially with the naming of the three boys. Okay.
Yes, right.
I guess if, if we can't figure it out somehow, before you sign it, we'll have it back here.
Okay.
About that.
You guys will figure it out.
Who has a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to nothing. I like the way you guys work together on that. Okay, item 10, the variance and exception at 2324 Southwest 9th.
Item number 10 is also a use variance for a property that recently had their rezoning request denied. They had a request before City Council to rezone it to C2, but at that time, the City Council denied the use, or denied the rezoning on the basis that a use variance would be the more appropriate route to go. The subject property is a fairly small property at the corner of Kirkwood Avenue and Southwest 9th Street. It's just a, it was developed as a little gas station. They're wanting to reoccupy it with a heating and plumbing business. Here's the site plan or the site sketch that they've submitted. The existing building here with a one-way circulation through the site coming off of Southwest 9th Street. It would have, meet the minimum required number of off-street parking spaces of four. Given the limited size of the site, they do need exception to the width of the stalls and the drive aisle width. And they also need a variance of five feet less than the required five feet of paving setback along both the east and the south property lines. Staff does see there is a, it is reasonably necessary to allow them to keep the pavement up to the property lines, just in order to allow the site to function. Here's a photo of the site as it appears currently. You can't really tell from this photo, but it is, there is paving between the building and the sidewalks along both the east property line, along Southwest 9th, and the south property line, along Kirkwood. This is looking at it more from the south, looking north at the site. You can see there's a house just to the, just to the north and then a house also just to the west. This is looking at the back of the commercial building. The house to the west actually has their driveway on the subject property. There is an easement for that. The applicant indicated that he actually bought the property not knowing that that easement existed, but, so this gravel driveway here is actually on the subject property. Go back to the site sketch. Staff has recommended approval of the use variance and the variance to paving setback and the exceptions to the parking and maneuvering widths. But we have recommended a few conditions. One of those, we've recommended that any outside storage and materials and equipment be prohibited. The applicant's proposing an overhead garage door here that would allow them to park their trailer related to the plumbing and heating business inside. However, I can let him explain more today, but he does have some desire to have some outside storage occur on the property. He didn't know if that would be up front or possibly in this area behind the building. He said if he did put it back here, he would screen it. So the second condition we've recommended is that he remove the pavement between the property line and the sidewalk. This site sketch here isn't an engineered site sketch. It's just the designers, like, best guess. So whether it's one foot or two feet or even less than a foot between the sidewalk and the property line, we've asked to have that removed. That just would provide a little bit of green space between the street and the parking lot. The third condition we've recommended is that they provide some sort of landscaped feature here at the corner. And in talking with Mr. Grinnell, he does, that has been his intent, is to do some sort of planter bed at the base of the sign that is located here at the corner. We didn't recommend any specific dimensions for a planting bed. We just thought it would be beneficial to have some sort of greenery on the site. And then the fourth condition was just compliance with all applicable building codes and any necessary permits. Are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions, and I'm just maybe a little confused. You've got the one-way sign. What are these little marks on there? Is that supposed to be, what, cement or something?
Yeah, where there's the dots, that's the paved, existing paved area.
Okay, so how could they come back and park back here? I think you were kind of pointing to.
Well, their property line actually comes up to right here. So you can see the house to the west has their driveway on.
Yeah.
This property, but there is an easement that allows that driveway to be here. But Mr.
So how could the, the new owner, how could he park his things back, back there? How would he get there?
He could expand this driveway, this drive approach here, or even work out an agreement with this property owner here to use their driveway to access his storage area. There's about, I'd say it's like 12 feet between the building and the driveway where there's, it's green space now.
Because it, it really is a pretty residential area in there.
Yeah.
I would hate for those people, do they have to give access to the new owner to, to park back there with that easement?
There is an easement on there that.
There's an easement for the homeowner.
For the homeowner to use the property.
So the, the owner of the building could also use it, too?
I haven't read the language in the easement, but. There may be a.
I mean, I'm just thinking this homeowner would say, gee, why should I give up my driveway?
There would still be an opportunity to, you're able, or allowed to get a 24-foot-wide driveway. I'm guessing the existing driveway here is only 10 feet, so.
Okay.
He could still widen the driveway, so.
So we'd have, if he wants to park back there, the only way he can do it is to use that neighbor's driveway, which is really his driveway, or put in an additional driveway, which to me then makes it look awfully commercial.
Yeah. And our condition number one that we've recommended is that he not be allowed to have any outside storage.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm.
Materials or equipment. Something I should also point out, in the past, there's been a backhoe parked on the site, but that backhoe was, it wasn't part of his proposed business. It was there to do some, I believe, digging on the site for utilities on the site. So if there's any questions that come up about that backhoe that was there, it's not related to this building or this business.
Bert, you said on your number one, prohibitive outdoor storage materials, equipment, including company vehicles or trailers. So if he put all his equipment inside, he still couldn't park his, I don't know how many vehicles there.
If it was a, like a, a personal or a vehicle that could double as a personal vehicle, like his pickup truck that had the company logo, I think we would, we would allow that. This here, the company vehicles, I guess when that was wrote, it was really looking at not having a backhoe or a.
No, I understand that, but I guess I was getting at to what you just said. He has his, his pickup and it says his company logo.
Yeah, we would, we would allow that to occur if it was, if it's a vehicle that can double as a personal transportation.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. Appicant represented the applicant?
My name is Raymond Garnu, GBA, Rage Plumbing and Heating. Members of the staff, I want to thank the staff for working with me on this issues and stuff and trying to come to some kind of compliance with this, trying to get this to work. Couple of things I have is the green space. When you look at the, the measurements, the green space that would be accessed or added to that on Southwest, on Southwest 9th Street, is basically starts off about 20 inches from there to the sidewalk. And since the, since the lot kind of angles, it comes down to about 18 inches. While this, that parking lot is basically about 10 inches of solid concrete with two inches of asphalt on top of it. And same thing along the other side, it starts off about 20 inches and comes down, comes back down to about 18 because of the diagonal. That would be about a $2,500 cost if, to have that done. And to put in that little bit of green space, I really don't see the value of it. There is green space between the curb and the sidewalk on both sides, which is approximately about five or six feet, or five feet, I think. The planner, I planned on putting the planner in. It was one of my ideas to start with. Instead of putting the green space in, I thought maybe putting another, some, maybe a couple of long planners in there with, with like a paving brick that would be set on top of the asphalt. I'd probably have to drill some holes down it so some of the moisture would get out of it. That would be, I think, would look a lot better than just a little bit of that grass in there to try to maintain that on that end of it, but. And then in the, in the back of the building, we requested some storage. We have a small trailer that we put stuff on that we take to the job site when we're doing. doing work. Basically, it's barricades, like flashing lights and plywood that we use in our ditches and stuff, or, what do you call them, rubber cones that they put on the street for traffic. Basically, that stuff goes on my trailer, and then when I go to a job, 90% of my work is, is out on the job and won't be in that building. Mostly, the building will be just used for an office, and by putting the service door back in, I can put a, a service truck inside there with the equipment and material on it, and so the people can't mess with it. Basically, it was a deal. None of my trucks have any advertising on them because I, I do an awful lot of work for other plumbers and other companies. And so, when I pull up, it's, I'm just a subcontractor, but I'm not advertising against them or plugging my advertising. The two trees behind the building there, the, the one tree to the fr, to the south is pretty much dead, and we haven't gone initial yet, but we plan on taking that tree out of there. And then the, the right of ways, as he's explained, the land all the way to the, to the west is, is my land, and we gave, the easement is given to the, to the homeowner for the driveway, which he's come down here before and talked on my behalf at one of the other meetings, and doesn't have any objections to me doing anything there. And I plan on building a privacy fence and putting my dumpster back there with a small trailer that I was explaining to him about that would come and go. And behind a privacy fence, which, which is kind of legal in a residential neighborhood, everything would be out of sight. So, I don't see where it would cause anybody any problems or create any kind of a, an issue with anyone. Also, outside storage, I don't know if I would be allowed to have a, a utility shed like most residential areas have. If, I do have some grass to cut there, so I need a place for lawnmower and some, and some outside tools, I guess. Basically, the lawnmower is what I'm after because I don't want the, the gas inside the building and smell from the lawnmower and stuff that, you know, can kind of get in the air and stay there all the time.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'd like to have that, see if that would be allowed along with the fence. As far as the driveway goes, I believe the driveway goes a little bit more to the, to the east there, to what's drawn in the picture. The curb's there, but the gravel's clear, clear over there that gives me access to both driveways. And in my paperwork on my, on the easement, it does give me the use of the, of the driveway also. So, I wouldn't have any problem getting into that, that area with it. And plus, we also have about 12 feet between the sidewalk and the, and the end of the building, so that 12 feet, you can pretty much put a little trailer right in there. Actually, the trailer I'm talking about, you can, you can take off with a hitch and just push it in there by hand. It's nothing that's really big or, or looks, really looks commercialized. Now, I do have a backhoe and a dump box, and the reason the backhoe was sitting there is we, and earlier, we put a brand-new sewer and waterline into this building. So, the construction material was set there to do the work. And then I had the backhoe sitting there because I planned on doing some landscaping on that, that area behind the building. I was going to grade that down so we could get it asphalted, so it would be, you know, be clean and eat, and, right now, it's considered green space, but there's, there's white rock and gravel in there. It's just that it's been neglected for so long, it's got some overbrush on it.
Mm-hmm.
So, I believe at one time, there was parking back there originally. Basically, that's all I got, got to say. I haven't had any complaints from any of the neighbors. They're all for me being in there.
Okay. I just want to summarize, because some of the things you're asking, we're not in here, and I want to make sure that I can understand. You, you're objecting to the green space along Kirkwood and Southwest Ninth?
Well, I'm just saying, I don't think it's practical to go through all that labor just for, for what we're going to gain.
Mm-hmm. And, and I'm just trying to summarize. Yeah, we'll, we can discuss it.
Uh-huh.
Second thing is, you're, you want to still have an outside storage of equipment that 'd be on your trailer.
Just on the trailer or, or a utility shed back there, with, you know, one or two of them.
Okay, and then like a utility shed? Okay. So, that, that way, we know where we're working from.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else here to speak in support?
My name's Joe Buxton, 247 56th Street. I don't know this gentleman, but the one thing I see up here that concerns me that can't, staff brought up, was the act of taking out a foot, or 18 inches, or whatever it was, a small amount for green space with a 10-inch or 12-inch deep concrete parking lot, and then a foot of sidewalk. And the narrow space that you all proclaim that he has around this parking lot, it's going to create an issue of maybe somebody's tire driving off the edge because you can't get good compaction to get that dirt in there when you refill that in. You have sinkholes, you have people walking on the sidewalks next to that. You create tripping hazards, problems for liabilities for this gentleman as well as the city because of areas where somebody on a bicycle might ride off and fall into it. You're not going to have good even surfaces because it's not established over years. And I just think from a safety standpoint and a look standpoint, it's going to look better with the parking lot all the way to the sidewalk because you can never really maintain a grassy area on a little bitty space like that. Because we know how the grass looks between our sidewalk and the curbs on most of the city around here and a lot of the areas because of the, the dust and the way that thing go, that, that business goes right along Southwest Ninth right there. There's very little curb to sidewalk anyways. So, there's always going to be road grime, dust, and things like that going along, and it just seems to me that it doesn't really make sense, and it's going to be less appealing over time because of the incentives if we try to have a green grass strip through there. And that's all I've got to say. I just think that it would benefit the city as well as this gentleman much more if that part of the green space was not in there.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? I think we'll have some last comments from staff. Any last questions for staff? Sue Ann, you got something?
I do. Sue Ann Donovan, Board Chair. What we're talking about for green space is actually on city property. He needs to remove the paving that has been put on city property. So, we're not talking about having him take green space into his own property in order to, to establish the required green space setback. We're just asking him to remove what has encroached onto city property. I know that he did extensive work on a line here and re-asphalated over the whole thing, so he's sort of built up the problem on his own anyway. So, we, we do sort of need, well, we need the green space that's on the city property back, so he, he needs to remove that. Additionally, th, this is a, a very, very small, tight lot in a residential area that is attempting to be a contractor's storage yard if you start allowing contractors' equipment and extra storage outside, which is not incidental to this neighborhood, nor does it enhance the corridor of Southwest Ninth to have trucks and trailers and outside storage. So, I would argue that the board not allow outside storage, let's try and maintain the residential character of this area and this corner as much as possible. Trying to shoehorn a, more than an office into this area, and it's just, it doesn't lend itself well to that use, so I would encourage you not to allow outside storage on this lot.
What about, like, a gas mower shed? I noticed it didn't come up, and it's not on the plan.
Well, I suppose everybody can have a gas mower shed. I, I just don't like to see the increase of outside storage because once you start, it's an enforcement nightmare. It just, it builds up, and pretty soon, you're dropping dead pipes back there, and, you know, equipment that you aren't using, and then it becomes an enforcement nightmare. If we can keep it clean, then we don't have that, hopefully, propensity to make it difficult for us to enforce.
Okay. Brooke?
The applicant is only supposed to remove the paving that's on the city land?
Yes.
Does he have to do anything beyond removing it?
No, just put it back to green space.
No, no. So, he has to put back the green space? The city, that's not the city's responsibility. It's the applicant?
No, it's not his responsibility. He, he or his predecessors encroached on the city right of way, and it needs to be returned back to.
Earlier, I think Bert said you don't know exactly where the city property line is? Is that, was that correct?
There hasn't been a survey, too.
So, who...
Exactly where the property line is. This best estimate shows it's maybe...
But if you don't know where the property line is, how's he supposed to do this?
He can get that either through our engineering department or get a surveyor out if he wants to.
Who, who pays for that?
If he gets a surveyor, he will.
Excuse me?
He will have to pay for his survey. He can come down to the city, and we can give him aerials and things from the engineering department that he can determine where the lot line is. If he's not satisfied with that, he can hire a surveyor.
Any other questions for staff?
I, I know I'm a little late to the party here, but very familiar with this location. Sue, would, and I understand what you're talking about here, you know, the corridor, the way it looks. I don't like sitting the place sitting empty. I'd like to get somebody in there, but if he just had a company vehicle parked out front, would you be opposed to that per se?
I think Bert already said that if it was a company truck, like, that is the same size or type that somebody who drives for personally used, yes.
Okay, all right.
He had a backhoe there for a while. He's had a trailer on that site for a number of, of weeks. It's, it's, the site is so small that when you put one truck and one trailer there, it just looks hu, out of place, and, and we're, it clutters that corner, so...
All right. Okay, that's very helpful.
Cindy?
And, you know, Sue, as you just said, the site is so small. So, to require him to dig up all the paving, I, I find that a, a bit ludicrous in my own mind. I would rather that that money be used to maybe expand the planter going up Southwest Ninth and maybe along Kirkwood, too, versus having a little tiny bit of green space that's going to be impossible to maintain.
Unfortunately, it's not up to the board to determine that he can use city land for part of his parking. If he wishes to acquire or vacate or lease it, that is a certain, a separate, a separate process.
There is a difference between the green space that would be the five-foot setback from the property line onto his property that, and, and you're not asking for any of that in this case?
No, we're allowing him through this to maintain his paving into what would be normally considered a required setback, which would be green space. We just can't allow through this process for him to maintain a parking on, or main, or improvements on city right of way. So, I'm sorry. I apologize. And with all due respect, the board doesn't have the right to tell, to order that. If he wishes to go and lease that city right of way, he would have to get...
That's outside of this venue.
It's outside, it, it's an option. It is outside of the, this board's ability to grant. So, not to confuse the, the issue, but the removing of this that's on city property is a whole nother enforcement avenue that he can address through vacation and lease through PNC and the council.
Brooke?
I, I don't see how we can vote on this then if we don't know where the property line is, meaning if the property line goes way back farther than we think, this gentleman, the applicant, may not be able to use the property for what he wants to use if he has to tear up so much paving and concrete. How would we possibly make a decision without knowing where the property line is?
My feeling is, hopefully, the city has some sort of record where they think the property line is.
They said they didn't.
No, we said that we have it in the engineering department, and we can get him that information.
It's not here.
No.
I, I'm not going to vote, I won't vote for this without the property line.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Brooke. Is there any other questions for staff? Mr. Garnou, this is a little unusual. Normally, when new information comes up, you don't have a chance to do, but with the information coming, do you, do you want to talk about the, this green space issue?
Picture that we have, the spaces, the, the surveyor stakes are, I found, and that's where I came up with those measurements that I gave you. It starts off at about 20 feet, goes to about 18 inches, and then it's about, that's on the east side, and on the west, south side, it's, starts at about 20 inches in the middle of the, the house behind me, and then it goes to about that same 18 inches diagonal. That's where I got those measurements at, and then the, the area of viewing that the city has shows that boundaries. That's, that's what I'm going off of, and that pretty much complies with the stakes, the landscaping stakes that are there.
Mm-hmm. And you, and you heard staff's argument that even if it's five inches, 10 inches, 20 inches, some of this appears to be on city property, but it appears that there is also some avenues for you to consider keeping that without having to tear it out anything. Is that something that, that you would like to pursue, or?
Yeah, I'd go down that avenue just because of the expense of tearing it out. The other thing is that this building's been there for 40 years as a gas station. That's been, that's been blacktopped and cemented for 40 years, and it's, it's within that neighborhood. Now, they keep saying it's a residential area. At one time, the two houses behind me and the house to the, to the north of me was all one property. These two houses just got sold here in the last couple of years, and it got divided all up. And I'm not sure when the house to the, to the north of me was built, but it came in after the building was there. And also, Southwest Ninth Street was widened at some times, so I'm sure the city bought some of that land, and so, since I've lost my grandfather clause, when I, when I, you know, jumped into this lock, this monster here, this has all come about. But, I mean, the city staff has been working with me, you know, in a lot of ways, and I appreciate all that, but the site is so small to run any kind of a business in it, you know, and you've got to have some leeway, which I'm giving, but any kind of a business, you've got to have something acceptable where you can put some things outside because not everything can go inside the building. And I think if it's done in a clean manner and not trashed, or, you know, I don't have no trouble with inspections or somebody coming, you know, or, you know, somebody complaining about it because I don't see it going that way. Because, like I say, 90, 99% of my business is away from the building. I basically was an interest in the building for putting an office in there and having a place where wholesalers can come and deliver stuff to the building where I don't have to be there. The price of gas and this kind of stuff running all around, if you have a place where they can drop it off and usually give them guys a key or access to the building, they can just back up and put it in there. So, when I come to the shop in the morning or next day, I can have that material sitting there for me. And that was my whole concept of, of doing this. As far as work trailers and stuff, the backhoes in the dump box I have, I've got other places to store that. And it was only on the job site for the construction work that we was doing, and the backhoe stayed there a little longer because of the fact that I was going to grade that back area behind the building. Now, the dump box is still sitting there because the inside has to be completely renovated. So, I have the dump box, so there's no sense in me paying for a storage container. I mean, that's why it's sitting there so that I can start. So, in the last four or five months, I haven't been able to do anything to the building. I'm sitting here paying, you know, I'm up close to $10,000 in expenses here with rent and insurance and utilities, and I can't do nothing. And my pockets are not that deep. I'm running out of, you know, ways to go here.
Okay.
And sir, if I can just ask you a question, I'm somewhat familiar with this property. Did you just, didn't you just recently purchase this property?
Yes.
And wasn't it a foreclosed property, so you were...
The person that I bought it from, it was a foreclosed property from the bank, and he purchased it, and that's why the other two lots got, the houses to the west of me got divided, and that's why that easement came in, where they gave him all of that land. Normally, they'd only give a house 10 to 12 foot for a driveway, but they gave him an extra 20 feet, which made that area, because the gravel that was existing there in that driveway, which was used by the station, or they shared it, because at one time, it was all one property. And so, they just went to where the gravel was at, so they gave him all that extra land, where if there'd been some consideration of somebody maybe speaking out for the corner lot, they probably wouldn't have had that much of a right of way.
But when you purchased it, did you check into what you could or couldn't do with it?
No, I didn't have any knowledge of, I thought that it was a commercial building, and it was on Southwest Ninth Street, which is very commercialized street. You know, and they say, oh, I'm in the neighborhood, or in the neighborhood one block, or the one, one lot, which is not even a, probably a third of an acre. So, I don't look at it as being in the residential area. We're just touching it, you know, on the back side, where the front side is, is all commercial. So...
But the house next door is residential?
Yeah.
Isn't the house to the, the house to the north is residential, and the house across the street's residential?
True, but half a block down the street is commercial and commercial.
Okay.
You know, and then up the street is commercial and commercial, all the way up, up and down Southwest Ninth Street.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions?
I just have a clarification question from, for staff.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
It's my understanding there was a request to rezone this property to C2 general retail, and the city council denied that.
Correct.
So does that mean that it was in front of planning and zoning commission prior to that? Did they also deny it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any last questions for staff? Most of the public portion go to board decision.
I like staff recommendations. I wouldn't, wouldn't vary from that.
I don't agree with removing the excess pavement.
I don't think that's up to us.
Well, it's been that way for years, and I, I just don't understand why he should have to incur all that extra expense. It seems like a, I mean, it's city property, but how many other places does this happen?
Well, once again, this board cannot get rid of city property. It takes, ultimately, it takes city council approval.
Why is this listed as item two then for staff recommendation to us if it's not under our purview?
It'd be a little bit of a disservice to put that as a condition, because it gives the board the sense that they might be able to pull that out of there. What we do is put those in there so they're on notice.
Sure, it's a good reminder.
Something we're going to have to do, yeah.
What about the fact that we've had these inherent several other times? Have we exceeded our authority?
I don't think so. This came up last month with the barber shop, if you recall.
Well, if we can't, if we have no authority on it and it's in there, how have we not exceeded our authority in the past?
I don't remember that kind of approval.
I can pull them for you.
On a lot of these, we had discussions about the landscaping setback from the property line onto the private person's property. This, what you're talking about, is excess paving that is in the right-of-way, in the city's property, correct?
Yeah, we're asked, they need to fix the encroachment.
Because I know with a lot of these car lots, you know, they didn't have the five-foot setback.
Can transportation to maintain it there?
Right, okay.
You know, they, they can do that with an area, I don't know if an areaway permit works. Vacation might be a struggle, because I know these, these were determined for that when they reconfigured 9th Street, and there may be little from a traffic perspective.
And that's really not up to us anyway, so we don't.
Yeah, that would be their.
So it's not even part of our discussion.
But, but I also don't want to give a sense that that's an easy thing to go about doing.
Right, right.
Well, and, and I think, to what Brooke says, by saying that he's got to remove that, doesn't really address the issue that he has other options. He can lease, he can purchase.
He can request.
Possibly, it may be challenging as well, but.
Well, I, no argument there, but, I mean, what, if, if we take this on face value, for his only alternative is, it'd be to remove it, and there are other options.
But certainly, we agree that the variance for all the, the normal five-foot required should be waived, otherwise it makes it not functional, so.
Right, so, so you've kind of conceded to that al- already. There are no five-foot setback requirement there.
We're giving him that.
That's what we're recommending.
Yeah.
Okay, so does item two then need to be removed, since it's?
If you want to strike it, it wouldn't have any bearing probably on, on the matter. We're still going to pursue it through our traffic.
Like Brooke says, nothing we can vote on anyway, so. Alright, no?
On item one, it says, "No outside storage of blah, 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 including company vehicles." Could we maybe?
He's going to put in a door, maybe what he would just put in and over there.
Right, but, you know, if he wants to have a service van or one service truck there, I wouldn't flip a cork about that.
Well, the, the thing he wants to put in is, is a trailer that'll have like safety cones, some material that he just takes out to the job site, so it'd be there, gone, there, gone, there, gone.
But will that eventually go inside to the overhead door, or not?
It said no.
Again, so I see what, you know, what staff's saying is we don't want anything stored outside, including company vehicles. To me, a company vehicle, I wouldn't mind. Maybe that, you know, staff doesn't want the trailer, I, you know, it's up for vote, but I wouldn't mind at least scratching the company vehicle part. Just, you know, if he wants to have a van, his main truck, a service body truck.
I won't agree to that.
Just not even one truck.
No, like you said.
He's allowed one outside anyway.
He is, okay, okay.
And it doesn't, he doesn't have any, his truck isn't marked, so he could just park a van there.
Anyway.
But if we take that out, then all of a sudden, we have a trailer, we have cones, we have all of that.
Right, well, I didn't say scratch trailer necessarily, but.
Everything needs to be inside, for me to approve it.
Okay.
So, I think we're, we're moving along the right path here. The thing that, that's hanging out there is the trailer. What do we think about the trailer? He wants to store that behind the building and remove it every day, put it back every day?
Not in a residential neighborhood. I'm not going to.
Alright, any other thoughts?
I'd gather that might change what the neighborhood would think, or the neighbors might think. Was that clear in the application?
We've got one side of it, so.
Okay.
It's too tight of an area. It is such a small area. We have a single family to the north, we have a single family to the, to the west of it. It, it, it's too tight of an area.
Okay, so we'll take, you're going to make the motion?
Well, I, I'll take out two, but I don't think it changes anything.
Alright.
I'm not in favor of him, I mean, I think it needs to, I think the excess paving needs to come out, but if we don't have any jurisdiction over it, I guess it doesn't really matter whether we have it in there or out. But it doesn't, it certainly doesn't mean that he gets to leave it there.
Oh, no, that'd be coming to city enforcement.
That's how staff earns their money, they will deal with that.
Yeah, so if it absolutely has no impact, then I would take number two out and make a motion to approve the variances and exceptions subject to item one, three, and four.
Okay.
I'll second that then.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
I, I don't see how this gentleman is going to come out. I, I think he's bought a property and would, and I understand maybe some more research, but I don't see how he's going to run a business here with the expense and the storage and et cetera. I, I think we're doing him a real disservice.
Okay. The motion is seconded, is there any further discussion then? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Those opposed? Motion fails three to two.
So now he gets nothing.
Well, where do we go from here? Does it go to staff recommendation? Well, I don't think it's going to change. Yeah, but I don't want to leave the guy walking out here, nothing. Yeah, it is. Okay, alright. Okay, folks, unless there's a reconsideration here, none of the variances and exceptions will be granted. On a three to two vote, there's no four votes, so if, if there's not a reconsideration on this, then all the stipulations that, that he's come here to appeal on will still be held against him, so.
So eventually, if the no votes eventually said, "You're denied everything."
Everything, correct.
So he could still run his business there, but he wouldn't be able to have outside storage of anything and this, that, and the other thing? Or is his business just not allowed by zoning now in the C1?
Well, see now, what, what staff says, they, they've recommended the, the five-foot setback, is that right, Eric?
Oh, so that's off the table too.
Yeah, see that?
So that would be off the table.
That's off the table too, so now he's in non-compliance again.
Any, any business that was going to reuse this site had the issue of the five-feet setback and the.
Right.
So, that relief is going to be necessary for anybody to.
So we'd have to rehear it again for someone else?
Possibly. The, the use of just a building for the office is allowed under the.
In the C1?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the office, as an office.
Okay.
But no vehicles or storage or workshop or.
Okay.
Okay. Then we understand what that means, that all variances and exceptions are gone by, by a no vote, okay? So do we have any reconsideration? As it stands right now, it's a three to two vote, he hasn't got enough to pass. It'd have to come from over here.
But in a strange way, almost going back in time, could I offer to rehear it and with the same thing, that I'm recommending staff recommendations here?
That's what Mike suggested, so.
Okay. Okay, because a hearing's just three out of four.
I mean, I would think the.
Or three out of five.
Would be happy with this.
Right.
Rather than nothing.
Mm-hmm. Oh, no question, that's what I'm.
So could I make a motion to reopen it, to consider this again with, or can, or can I just say to reconsider it, and then make a motion there in what I would like to approve? Okay, I'd make a motion to reopen consideration of this item based on this recent vote.
I'll second it, see what we get. So, all those in favor to rehear it, raise your hand and say aye. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Motion carries four to nothing, so.
I, I make a motion to approve the variances and exceptions as requested, as suggested by city staff, with the exception of removing number two, because it's not going to have any bearing on it.
Then I would second that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion that we can have on this?
And it's not going to be a problem for him to park a truck out there.
Yeah, he can't, he can't park a truck out there.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yeah, Linda, that he can park a truck out.
He can, yeah, he can park a truck, he just can't park a.
Trailer with a ditch which on there, yeah.
Yeah, he can't park a truck that, that, because now he couldn't park a truck that has whatever the name of his company is, but he's already said he doesn't have any vehicles with his name on it, so if he has just a regular vehicle, he could park it there, just like anybody can. But he can't park a company vehicle that has, you know, no trailers, nothing like that.
And then there's no accommodation for a lawnmower in the back, like a shed or anything?
He'd have to just go down and get a permit and build a shed.
Get a permit for a shed, yeah.
You could just get a permit.
Yeah, that's outside of your.
Park it inside.
We don't have.
But it's not on the site plan.
No, I mean.
I didn't.
Probably ask him to do a minor amendment or something.
I mean, there would have to be, you guys would have to approve the site plan, because I don't see any place for a dumpster, I don't, I mean, if we start putting sheds and dumpsters and all this kind of thing.
That would trigger site plan.
I mean, that's, that's up to you guys.
Yeah, and he has to still, any shed has to be out of the required setbacks and that kind of thing.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Another vote, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Those opposed? And one abstention, so motion passes four to zero with one abstention. We almost got you there. Thank you. Alright, we're going to go back now, pick up where we left off. We had two, Mel, we had two that we're going to wait for you. First one's item four, and this is a continuance from last month. It's an amendment to previously granted appeal at 408 East Thornton.
Mr. Chair members of the board, I won't give the in-depth presentations since we did all of that last month, but the gist is, back in 2010, the board granted some variances and exceptions to allow retention of a 40-foot by 60-foot accessory structure. The retention of that was subject to these five conditions. At this point, the applicant wants to amend two of these conditions. One, amend the condition that horizontal lap siding be required on all four facades. They're willing to put horizontal lap siding on the north facade only, but they want condition number three altered, so it only requires the lap siding on the north facade, or the horizontal siding on the north facade, and then they want to be able to keep their metal roof instead of the asphalt shingles that were required. And then the other minor amendment was, condition number one required a paved drive approach from the street to the north facade of the building. They're wanting to revise that so that the fence, or the paving is only required to the solid fence, so it's just a pretty minor amendment there. It was continued a month so that the applicant and his, their attorney could meet with the neighbor who is an objection and his attorney. That attorney representing the objector has since submitted this letter here that states they would be agreeable to allowing the amendments subject to these provisions. One, they want the appellant to plant five trees along the north property line to provide an additional screen. They want the concrete drive to extend to the fence, and then they want the horizontal lap siding on the entire north wall of the building. So it sounds like the applicant and the neighbor did come to this agreement, so. I guess, is, are there any more questions?
Are you in agreement with this now, or?
I think the official staff position is we would prefer the whole building be horizontal lap siding and asphalt shingles, but leave that up to the board.
Okay, any questions for staff? Thanks Bert. Appicant, representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon. Joel Templeman, on behalf of the appellant, Louis O'Malley Law Firm, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300, Des Moines, Iowa. As Bert indicated, this matter was before the board on December 19th. It was continued in order for the appellant, who's here with me today, Natalie Phelps, to reach out to the neighbors, or the neighbor that was objecting to this request and try to reach some sort of agreement. That's happened. Dan Manning from my firm was here on behalf of Mrs. Phelps in December. After that meeting, Mr. Manning and Mr. Hardy, the attorney for Pete and Esther Leo, who were the objecting neighboring property owners, had several conversations and were able to reach an agreement, which is outlined in this letter before you that I believe has been submitted of record. The appellant is agreeable to doing everything set forth in this letter as requested by Mr. and Mrs. Leo. There is hardy plank horizontal siding on the north wall of the accessory structure, structure, and the remaining three sides do have the vertical siding. It is hardy plank, which is, I'm sure as you know, a quality product. And Mr. Leo has agreed to these terms, as my client has. I would ask the board to take that into consideration and to, to grant our relief that we requested here today. It's my understanding that this was presented on the 19th. I don't want to take more of your time, but I would welcome any questions you have, and I'd be happy to answer everything you have. Mrs. Phelps is here as well, if we need her to, to answer some questions, but I think at this time, maybe it's more efficient for, effective for us is to have me answer some questions for you.
The only one I've got is, and the Leos were the only couple that were here to object. Was there any other neighbors? I know there were some that had some on the consent map. Do you have that, Bert? I just want to make sure that the agreement's between the Leos and the Phelps now. But is everybody comfortable with this decision? Templeman, take a look, see, it's not just the Leos.
Leos own that property here, and then we also had one from the Philipholies, and then the Burmese to the two directly to the north.
Okay, we have not had, I'm unaware of any other objections in addition.
And the reason is because they, they weren't here, they just sent the cards in.
Correct, no, I, I have not spoken with either of those two individuals.
Okay.
I was unaware of any other folks that were objecting to it after that December 19th meeting. The only folks that we knew that still had an objection were the Leos.
Okay.
There's a, in addition, or, I'm sure you know this already from the previous meeting, but there's a privacy fence that goes around the appellant's property. There are existing trees there as well, right now. And we've agreed to plant five additional trees as a screening mechanism. So from the neighbors' immediate to the north of this property, I don't think there's going to be any issue as far as seeing this building. And the building's... It's built... It's a high-quality building. And the reason hardy plank siding on this building. Hope that answers your question.
Well, depending on how the vote goes here, I'd encourage you to talk to the back two people here. Just let them know what's going on and alleviate any concerns they got. Like I say, they were not here. They just sent in cards of objection. The Leos actually showed up. So that's where our focus was to bring the two parties together, so that we got some sort of... To be frank, seeing this thing for the third time is enough. I want to get this thing resolved, so I don't know where the vote's going to go. But if it does get approved, I'd like to make that a condition, that you go talk to the other two as well.
It's fine with us.
Those cards were only sent in December, not again in December.
That's right, yeah.
They had another opportunity to object.
If they'd got sent again, you're saying?
The cards that Bert has were sent in December, so I presume they were re...
We didn't mail new...
Oh, you didn't? Okay. I'm sorry.
Right.
I'm sorry. I thought it was re-whatever the word is.
Noticed. Okay. Mel?
I do have one question for you. You say that you're willing to install the driveway, you know, from the curb south to the fence, which I understand that.
Exactly. And just south, actually, of the fence.
Yeah, which I would also encourage, you know, because if you close the fence and want to drop some posts in, or just so it just doesn't look like it ends there, if it goes maybe a foot past it or something. But my question related to that is, staff talked about a sixteen-foot-wide driveway. Now, I'm not sure what the width is.
No, we had just said maximum sixteen feet.
Maximum sixteen width. Okay. Depending on how the curb cut is now, what would your proposed width be? Ten, twelve?
We have a... I have a picture with me. It is... It is...
Okay. All right.
We have it already.
So kind of from that taper you've got now, you would continue to the south with that? Right. And just go past the closed fence? Okay. And I'd say that's more than wide enough for a car trailer. That's probably ten feet there at least. Okay. And Bert, that's okay with you guys for width and everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support?
My name is Marilyn DiMaggio, and I live at 401 Southeast Thornton. I realize this mess has been going on for a long time, but it seems to be most of the concern is for Mr. Leo. Now, I'm south of this here, and I see the building every day. Now, the garage is horizontal... Vertical siding. And the building is... And it goes perfectly together. Now, the back of this new building, you're reciding to satisfy Mr. Leo, who I can understand can even see it. Because all I can see is a roof and a little bit of the siding. And why everything is done to satisfy him, I can't understand. I mean, we look at it face-on every day and have no objection to it. Half the time, you don't even realize it's there. So...
Mrs. DiMaggio, I just... Were you here to speak in support or...
In support.
Okay. Thank you.
Of her. Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff?
One question. The proposal that supposedly everybody's agreed to here calls for planting an additional five two-inch caliper trees. Now, does that ring with how you normally do site plans? What's a two-inch caliper tree? Is it...
It's two inches measured.
Well, yeah. I guess I... I'm sorry. I understand that. But on average, would it be four foot, six foot tall at that stage? Is there...
I would say probably six to eight feet.
Okay. All right. So it's a decent-sized tree?
Yeah. They already have a row of evergreen trees back there, but this would...
Further enhance things.
...overstory trees in addition to those evergreen trees.
Right. Now, the driveway in this case is off to the...
To the left.
To the left of this. So then we'd have these additional trees would be between the evergreens and what we're seeing here?
Yeah. The fence is set thirty feet back from the property line, so there's a pretty wide area where they could put the trees.
All right. And the horizontal lap siding now pretty much is already on the whole north facade of the garage? Except for the bottom three foot or something you would... Okay. Okay. But it's almost all on. All right. Thank you.
Go ahead, Bert.
Bert, are you... The staff recommendation is denial, so are you saying you don't agree with this?
Well, our position is we felt all along that to maintain the residential character, there should be asphalt shingles and horizontal siding on the entire facade of the building. That said, I don't think we're going to stand in the way if the applicants reach an agreement with the objectors. And there doesn't seem to be anybody here...
Okay. I just didn't understand, because it says denial, then it is... So what are we voting on?
Voting to amend the previous decision to allow them to have steel roof and vertical siding, with the exception in the back where it'd be horizontal lap.
Including these recommendations.
Right.
Yeah. So I was standing up there, drafted some notes on the previous decision in order of what that would look like. Just revise the first condition to say any driveway from the fence to the front property line shall be paved with a maximum width of sixteen feet. And then the third condition could just say any accessory structure is constructed with the design and materials... Well, maybe just any accessory structure is constructed with horizontal lap siding on the north facade of the building. And then add a sixth condition provision of five two-inch caliper trees. No, that's kind of sloppy of it.
It's okay. I can read it.
Now, Bert, I got a question here. I attended a meeting, Mr. Page here, and one of the concerns is what happens if we have another set of drought this year and those trees die?
Well, if this decision requires these five caliper trees, they would be responsible for main... For replacing those. That says those evergreen trees were never... The evergreen trees were never a requirement. So if those evergreen trees would die, there's nothing that would force them to replant those.
Okay. But the calipers, as part of this decision, what?
Right.
All the drought season... You know, if there's no drought, you're just not running around with a five-gallon bucket there every third-day watering.
I rely on the DNR to help me out here.
I'd trust Mr. Page over me any day.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. We'll close the public portion and go to board decision. Anybody?
Well, Mr. Chair, I see a little writing on the wall here. I'd like to put a proposal out here to amend and approve the previously granted appeal. But what I'd like to do is remove the condition that requires horizontal lap siding on all the facades and asphalt shingles on the roof. So they don't have to put asphalt shingles on the roof. And the other three sides do not need to be redone.
So that's how Bert has amended what we saw? Okay.
And then what I would like to do is amend the previously granted appeal by just requiring that the driveway just extend from the... Extend further south from what's already been widened there from the curb cut, just past the fence, six inches a foot, just something in there, past the fence. No wider than sixteen feet, and no more than one driveway approach. Number two, still have to require that any drive approach is constructed and complies with all building codes and has necessary permits.
And I'm going to throw something in, because they did before, but they never finished them. So completed inspection.
Okay.
Get that... Can we make sure that's in there, Bert?
And completed, can we say within the next year? All right, the next six months? Well, if... Because if we do six months, we can't really do any paving right now.
Why not just do it?
Okay.
July 1st?
How about July 1st? We're just right in the middle of the year. July 1st. Paving has to be installed by July 1st. Okay? Okay. It's just the middle of the year. If we're worrying about like thirty days here, I think we're taking all this too far on both sides. If I was you, I'd have it done by May 1st. But yeah, yeah. Well, sometimes frost isn't out till mid-late March. And then it takes a contractor thirty days to get it scheduled, and da-da-da-da-da. Have it done by July 1st. No. Okay. Also, next item. Any accessory structures constructed with horizontal lap siding on the north facade of the building. Next item. Any accessory structure constructed shall not be used for home occupation. Your own private, store your cars, have fun, that's it. Any accessory structure constructed is set back at least thirty feet from the front property line along the Fleetwood Drive right away, I think it is. And finally, add five two-inch caliper trees between the fence and the curb side, all with review as may be appropriate by city staff for their installation location.
Okay. Do I get a second?
I'll second that.
Yes, been moved and seconded. I hope we're putting this one to rest. I don't want to see this come back ever again, so I'm going to support it this time. Okay. Any other comments? Alls in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries five to nothing. Thank you. Enjoy the peace and quiet. Finally. Item seven is a conditional use permit. It's 909 Robert D. Ray. And Bert has... Ben has a chance to see this letter from...
Yeah, he has.
He has? Okay. Thank you.
Item number seven is a request from the Botanical Center to have a conditional use permit that would allow the service and consumption of wine, liquor, or beer throughout the entire botanical gardens, which is undergoing expansion and renovation in the upcoming year. The subject property is located just north of the freeway on the east side of the river. It's an over-fourteen-acre site. Robert D. Ray Drive currently runs through the site. They've already got the approvals necessary to eventually close off Robert D. Ray Drive. There'd be a X or service drive coming from the north, and then the main entrance coming up the existing Robert D. Ray Drive from the south. That's part of the expansion. It'd be adding additional parking spaces.
Bert, back up. Since I use that other site, which side... Where's it going to be blocked off?
The next... I'll get to a better diagram.
All right.
The conditional use permit would allow this service of wine, liquor, or beer anywhere in the facility. Really, the intent is both for the restaurant, that's going to be operating within the Botanical Center, and then also for special events occurring at the Botanical Center. They'd like to have the ability to allow people to carry their drinks throughout the dome and throughout the gardens outside. Here's the site plan that's going to be considered by the Plan and Zoning Commission on February 7th. However, just point out that the closure of Robert D. Ray Drive between the parking lot and the service drive to the north, that has already been ran through the Plan and Zoning Commission and approved by city council. So that's really not part of this appeal or this request today. The request today would allow the issuance of liquor or beer permits to be issued. And that color drawing Ben just gave me is probably a little easier to read. You can see it's... We'd be going through a multimillion-dollar upgrade. I'll explain their intentions more in depth. But we did get the one letter from Capitol Park Neighborhood Association, and then I believe five comment cards from owners of these condos, from five owners of condos adjacent to the east and the Delray Condominium Association, who have concerns. But staff believes that the request is appropriate. We've just recommended the approval be subject to these conditions. One, that any service of liquor, wine, or beer be in accordance with the proper permit obtained and issued through the clerk and city council. I'd also just point out that any service of alcoholic liquor would likely have to be within a contained area. So if they do get this approval, this would necessarily allow them to have the right to carry hard liquor drinks through the gardens. That might be limited to the secured areas. Two, they have to comply with the sound ordinance. Three, provide litter and trash receptacles throughout the premises. Four, they comply with the building fire codes. Five, they comply with the required site plan. And six, if it becomes a nuisance, they would... It would be subject to reconsideration by this board.
Bert, go ahead, Bert.
Can you go back to the map a minute? No, the... I'm sorry. The consent map. Are they under the regs, separated by the proper distance from the school?
Since this is owned DR, it's not subject to the separation requirements. The recently approved ordinance on separation requirements accepts out the C-3 districts and the DR districts. With the understanding that really the downtown area is a mixed-use environment where...
So on page 28, number four, five, and six, do they apply or don't they apply?
They do not apply. You're right that if the separation requirements were in effect, they wouldn't meet the separation requirement from the school, and they also wouldn't meet the separation requirement from the park that they're located in.
And since the city, you're so intent on liquor stores and separation, and I presume that would include consumption of liquor stores, why is the staff recommending approval?
We feel it's an appropriate use here.
For all fourteen acres?
Any service is going to have to occur in accordance with the permit issued by the city council. And that would... Those special event permits are going to have more regulations and more...
How would the... How would the Botanical Center please all fourteen acres on alcohol consumption?
I would let them answer that. Like I said, our sixth condition is if it becomes a nuisance, it could be brought back to the board for reconsideration, but...
You have someone?
And maybe I just misunderstood. But I thought you said that any alcohol would have to be confined, that they couldn't carry it around...
The... Like hard liquor drinks, like the mixed drinks, would have to be within a secured fenced-in area. The beer and the wine could be carried throughout the gardens.
If you have beer and wine, I can go anywhere on the fourteen acres. And that's not subject to anything.
It would still have to be in accordance with the beer and wine permits.
I think that's the same as... We allow taverns now, isn't it, Mike?
It's in the state. On the grid, 134-954, the... This property requires a conditional use permit. So it would also be subject to the conditions in the conditional use permit, as well as state law.
Yeah.
Bert, maybe... And maybe Ben probably knows the answer to this. Isn't alcohol served there already? Not sold, but served.
They have had the liquor license for... That's been issued to the caterer. However, right now, the botanical gardens don't include the... What has been Robert D. Ray Drive. So this would allow them to include the expanded areas of the gardens and the expanded areas of the building. They are making some modifications to the buildings on the site, like to the dome and to the... Like where the currently greenhouse is to the south in the dome. They're doing some modifications there. So this conditional use permit would cover those changes.
I guess my question is, there's a difference between... I guess my question is, there's a difference between served and sold. So if I have a wedding there and my caterer is going to have wine and beer, we can serve that, and then my guests can take it out.
Right.
But that's different than if I have a wedding there and I've hired somebody to come and we've got a liquor permit and now we have to buy the drinks.
Well, I think...
Is there a difference, or does it matter?
I think they would have a vendor that would be doing all of the...
Sure.
Yeah. I'd explain that.
Okay, so that, okay. I was just confused.
Somebody's buying, what is it?
It what?
Somebody's buying.
Right, yeah, maybe we see what Ben has to say and we'll ask him.
But my thought is, what's going to prevent me, who's not part of the wedding, just to saunter into that bar and say, okay?
You're one of those people.
Let me.
Wedding crasher.
And that's what I just don't know.
Any other questions for staff?
We'll get you later.
Yeah, okay. App, under representative applicant.
Chairman Gray, members of the zoning board of adjustment, Ben Page, director of Parks and Recreation. After being here for the last two hours, my first time seeing one of your meetings, I want you to know that my colleagues on the Des Moines Park Board would not be jealous of your work assignments, but I do thank you for all that you do here. Your work seems much more complex than Parks and Recreation is. So what we have today in front of you is something new, and why it's new to the city is that we went into a new long-term lease on January 1st for the Botanical Center improvements. As you know, the city has managed that through at least with Waterworks. The council went through an eighteen-month process with over a dozen different public input meetings, from the concept of management outsourcing to the ideas of capital construction and what those things might look like, such as removing the road and the nice improvements, over eleven million dollars in improvements this group wants to do. So now we're here today because they've identified their plans and now they're into the programming phases, but how they'll serve the community best. One such thing they want to work on is obviously selling alcohol, and they need your permission to do so. So today with me, and I'll get into more details, is their executive director, Stephanie Judela, and their operator that would do the alcohol, the restaurant pieces, Mike Lavelle.
Excuse me, could you talk more slowly?
Oh, sure, I can slow down.
My brain is even going out.
So, yep, absolutely, glad to help. So what we have now is the idea of this, you're wanting to have a programming piece, much like the zoo. You'll be all familiar with the zoo here in Des Moines, Iowa, down the south side. They do all kinds of events, from weddings to fundraising galas to zubrue. It's a weekly thing through the warm weather months, they have music and they get a different crowd that are trying to promote and program that facility to help them raise money to keep those operations going. So what we have today is a proposal in front of you to sell alcohol throughout the grounds and allow them to do those events that they wanted, galas, weddings, parties, gatherings. And by the way, I think it's also good to let you know too that, look at this map again, there is going to be a fence around the facility. The council approved their master plan. The facility is going to be fenced in now. When the new, the whole facility, the first fourteen acres, correct, Stephanie?
Can you back up to the ladder?
Not going to look like a prison, is it, Ben?
We're actually trying to hide the fence with some landscaping, some screening. So just like all major attractions, they want to be able to charge for who's coming in, and if they're going to put eleven million dollars into some outdoor spaces, as you can kind of see here, that you can rent separately, like the circle space, formal gardens to the different areas, they want to be able to charge for that entrance and exit, so.
So it prevents Linda from just kind of showing up when she wants?
Unless she's really good at hopping fences.
I'm not.
Any other questions?
Um...
Brooke, go ahead. Me. Is, can you show us where the fence is going to be?
Stephanie, use yourself.
Yeah.
Stephanie Judela, president and CEO of the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden, the nonprofit that is leading the institution, 909 Robert D. Ray Drive.
Thank you.
I'll just reference with my pen the boundary of the fence line.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
And there is pedestrian access to the bike trail here that would have a turnstile or something, so people can get through.
But is there a fence on the other side?
There is a fence, I'm sorry, on the top as well. When Robert D. Ray Drive closes, and there's a fence there today, we're updating some of the fences because there's some holes in the fence or it's been torn down. But the facility, when operated by Waterworks, they had a liquor license held by the caterer. They're no longer the operator, which is why we're here and we have a change of business. We're now the operator, and so we have to establish these things that have been in place for many years under the new leadership, and so we're just going through the process. And really, it's a very similar business structure that we have rentals and we have in-house events that we've had over the years, and there hasn't been a problem with them. We're just looking to have a strong model going forward for our operations and to be able to take in revenue through our restaurant and catering events, and we look for your support.
I got a couple of questions. Go ahead, Brooke.
How, you want the permit though to cover all fourteen acres?
The Waterworks had a different agreement than what we have with the city. We have a lease agreement for fourteen acres, so we're asking our fourteen acres. That's what we, what we're looking at. I would look to whatever the agreements are that the city puts in place of what alcohol beverage control is and what the permitted areas are, but we are the leaseholders of fourteen acres, so we're just coming as the leaseholder of those fourteen acres.
How would you, how would you police the gas on the back northwest corner and et cetera? How would you possibly police fourteen acres with people roaming all over the place with drinks?
Usually when events happen, they're in very confined spaces.
But you're asking for all fourteen acres.
We're the leaseholder of fourteen acres, and I didn't write the language, but that's how it came forward, is the leaseholder.
You may be the leaseholder of fourteen acres, but what you're asking us for is a permit for all fourteen acres to zone it that way. If you want to draw lines and say you're only going to serve alcohol in a certain area, that's different. You're not asking for that.
One of the things that's taken place over the next several years, this is a multi-phase project, and so we're going to, the gardens will continue to develop. The first phase would have one line, and then two years, we might have another garden that we would have a dinner party in or a private event. So that would mean that every time we add in a little new garden, that we would have to come back to the table and say, what season we brought another garden.
Yes, it would mean that.
So, I guess I would look to the zoo and other institutions around town, the zoo and Salisbury House, they have very similar...
Well, the Salisbury House has been before us before, and they were limited to the patio and the inside, not all the grounds.
And I don't know what the language was when Waterworks had the agreement and great Midwestern catering.
Well, that was, that's in the past. This is today.
We have a vendor that we're working with, Embassy Club, who has a great track record in town and...
I'm not questioning that. I'm questioning why you need all fourteen acres.
We hadn't looked at it in smaller increments. I can tell you where we're serving and would look to serve events. I haven't broken it down further than that, simply because we are the leaseholder and we are just looking to operate a business.
Mel?
Just a couple general cross questions. I'm very familiar with the zubrue and what the zoo does, and I think that really helped the zoo gain some different clientele, good clientele. But in this case, if I would come down here on a weekend with my in-laws, just to go through the Botanical Center and show them Des Moines, would I have people buying beer, running around me, crack an open one, or is the alcohol sales primarily going to be either just in the cafe and at your special events? Or can I just buy beer then and walk around and look at the plants?
Our new cafe space is right here in the green.
Okay.
And in our design process, we've talked about beverage control for the cafe of having gated fenced areas...
Sure.
...in that space. When we have private events, we might have a bar in the lobby and dinner in the dome, and that's after hours, it's after in public hours.
Right.
There are some events, like Botanical Blues, which happen where there is liquor and it's kind of an extension of what the cafe is. We have more people in the facility than what would be able to sit in the cafe, and that's been a practice that has been in place for many years, similar to like a zubrue.
Yep.
But it, you know, it is confined into the spaces where the programming is, and certainly we need to place that and manage it.
So in general, if I would come down there, I would know, oh, there's a special event going on, so that's why we've got some alcohol. It's not that I'm just down there and people are just running around like at the fair drinking, which, you know, at the fair, that's fine. Another related question, I'm assuming that you will not allow people to take alcohol off the premises. If they, if they buy their beverages, they consume them only on the premise?
I would agree with that.
Okay. And in general, if people are even coming to the Botanical Center for any kind of event, there's either a paid admission to get in, or they're on a list to get out to the courtyard or, you know, I just can't wander in, can I?
During business hours, you're a paid guest?
Yes.
Or a paid visitor?
Right.
Or you're a member that has membership privileges to gain entry, or we have passes to visit and coupons and everything, other means of getting in?
Right.
But it is admission-driven entrance?
Sure.
For the private events in the evening, you would have to be there for that event. You'd have to be a guest of that event, and we're servicing that outside of public hours.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
What's really bothering me about this whole thing, and I'll just say it, it bothers me a lot that we have fourteen acres that we as citizens have worked really hard to have, and now that's, I feel it's being taken away. It's being taken away because I can no longer just go in, pull into the parking lot and walk with my grandchildren through the beautiful gardens. What you're saying to me is, unless I have money and can pay to get in there, I'm not welcome. And that bothers me a lot. It bothers me a whole lot that we're doing this. What about children? I don't, I don't want to take my children down there and have them being around people with alcohol through fourteen acres, so...
That's not what would happen during public hours.
I guess I'd like to see a little better plan.
Well, first of all, another group of the city, and Ben Page can speak to this, has already addressed and allowed us to have a fence, and realizes that revenues of a gate admission, just like at the zoo, are required in order for us to operate this sustainably. The city was not able to do it, Waterworks was not able to do it, and that's what the time period that Ben Page has mentioned of the public process that has already approved these pieces. We are here for the alcohol discussion, and that is not about the emissions and the gate at this point in time.
I understand.
And so that is a very separate conversation. The cafe would have control during public hours, there'd be, there'd be boundaries of where that alcohol can be, just like if you were in the East Village and you went to Zombie Burger and somebody was having a beer. It's, you know, a very similar operation. We'll have a cafe. If there's private events, they would be in meeting rooms or spaces during public hours, and they would have to control where that alcohol is as well.
Any other questions? Ben, I got one, and probably more towards city staff. Normally, we see a police activity report. Do we know if there's any police activity that takes place down there because they've been serving alcohol, I don't know how many years, whatever?
Nothing comes to mind. I've been at the center of the whole proposal from the day that the civic leaders, if you will, Janice Ruon, Tom Urban, Fred White, they've part of the city, the city manager, signed me, so I've been on this for about two years and I've looked at it from every angle. I haven't seen any police reports that show me any track record of a problem. One thing that might be helpful, and I'm just, again, I have a weird role here, I'm in the middle with the city and when you're board is, I think that they might be considering an idea, if it makes you feel more comfortable to zone it in a little bit, maybe you don't need all fourteen acres at first. Maybe we could do an overlay for you to come back and show you, here's an area that we really want to be able to serve the alcohol at, which is what we're referring to as phase one, some of the defined garden spaces you saw on that map. You don't need to go all the way out toward the university side. If that's something that's amenable to this group, we'd be, I think you'd be willing to do that.
I think I'd alleviate some of the people's concerns here on the...
We'd love to be able to alleviate the concerns, that's, if it helps.
I'm guessing in principle, no matter what, fourteen acres or not, you would just be serving the alcohol on, you know, the garden areas, the patios, people are going to have a wedding, but that doesn't necessarily prevent somebody from running off into the corner with their drink and yelling at the neighbors or something.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can we amend it now, or do you have to go?
I, you know, I, we'll probably ask staff that question, can we do?
That's a good question. Do you guys have your phase one area on a map? Or what phase one would be?
Looks like she's doing, I was going to say we should continue so she could, we could highlight the areas where they want to have the events, but it looks like she might know that right now.
Depends on what's most proficient.
I don't know how much you can see it, but essentially that is what we're...
Just kind of run your pen through the area.
In essence, she's creating an exhibit here then, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So this boundary here is essentially where the phase one exterior garden development would be and would be within a fenced-in area. We expect that we'll continue to grow garden areas. For example, this garden area here could come online the next summer, but we still have to raise money and still have to build those gardens, and they take time. So that, the boundary of the formal garden areas will continue to expand as much as we have space here. It goes to much more natural area on the far north and near University Avenue, a woodland area, a much less likely programmable space for private events. We've concentrated the core of our landscape to have an event lawn and to have a belvedere where we could have a private dinner or a programmed space for public to come into those spaces, so.
Question, is that service drive where it kind of comes down and hits the bike trail, is that a pretty stationary thing?
What do you mean?
That's going to remain as kind of a benchmark there? That's not going to move in further plans?
It's a hammerhead that is required for us to service from the back end of the property, so...
I mean, I generally be comfortable, you know, if we like limited you to, you can't be serving alcohol to the north northwest of that service drive or something like that. I don't know if that's good enough for everybody else, but, you know, if you've got enough money and you can bump your garden out another fifty feet and put pavers in, I don't want you coming back time after time, but yeah, if we had something like that...
That is an edible garden that's planned in that space, and so edible garden often leads to dinners and wine and those things, so I think that looking at south of the hammerhead at this point in time, it sounds like a very easy line in the sand.
I don't know how the rest would feel, but that gets us away from people running up into the, you know, the northern fringes there and trying to get onto the bridge at university and doing strange things.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if any of the applicant have seen the reply cards, and you may want to look at them. There wasn't any in favor, and you may want to look at those reply cards. I think there's, the staff can give them to you.
I haven't seen the reply cards, but I have seen the letter from the Neighborhood Association.
Okay, now just more information. Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition?
I'm Marilyn Bruce. I'm currently the chairperson of the Capital Park Neighborhood Association. I live at 833 Walker Street. Before I listened to all of this, it was going to be pretty simple for me to respond. I used to go, I used to go to the balloon races down over in Indianola, and we took our blanket and some lunch, and we used to watch the balloons go up. And you know how it looks now if you've been there, it's all fenced in and you can't get close to the balloons, and there's all kinds of opportunities to spend your money. And so I sympathize with what Linda says. We've got a nice open facility here. I frequently go into the parking lot and go into the gift shop without going onto the grounds and... All this information, I may have missed some vital items, but the Botanical Center is in our neighborhood boundaries. We understand the need for additional opportunities to bring money into the city. Unfortunately, it seems to be by fencing and alcohol. I don't know why we're bringing the embassy suites into this. Apparently, we've been able to contract for special events. Even though the neighborhood is, as I said, is, it's in our neighborhood boundaries, we don't have any interaction. We, maybe it's because we didn't like it when they tried to cut off the Robert Ray Drive, but no one had... but no one has approached us at all, tried to give us any sort of information. This was a complete surprise to us when we saw it. I do thank the staff for improving the amount of time that we have to present to our Neighborhood Association as it was before. We'd get the information really in a, just prior to the meetings, and then we didn't have an opportunity to engage everybody. The, I'm trying to, and this is the first time I've heard about the restaurant doing it, too. I had thought that it was just special events, so we're going to give people lots of opportunity to spend their money on booze. I think that's, that'll just go on our plus side. The general opinion of the people who were at our meeting, this is, there's a goodly number of great facilities where liquor is a large part of their business. The Botanical Center is a great place for events, and we understand both the financial advantage and the beauty of having events there. However, our neighbors do not support an increased emphasis on liquor and not on its stated attraction for residents and visitors. I'll read you, Lorraine Eldridge, who was our past president, wrote this letter, and I thought this was a really good point. The liquor activity would divert the intended use of the facility and the grounds and gardens and conflicts with its purpose. A public facility for display of plants and educational programs on plants and environment and nature in general with meeting rooms for that purpose, as well as meetings sponsored by the City of Des Moines. It's become a lovely bar. If we do this, there are plenty of other places to drink, and I don't know, I'm just speechless about the expansion of that. If it's necessary to have mainly unrestricted liquor for the Botanical Center to survive, that ought to be a warning for its continued viability. And I'd be willing to answer any questions. I think you know where I come down on it.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Thanks, Bill.
Anybody else here to speak in opposition?
Hello, I'm Neil McDonald. I live in the condos up the hill, Delray Heights, 1120 East 6, Number 9, and I speak for myself, but I am on the Board of Directors there. I guess I'm so far opposed to it, because I'm, I guess my main concern's about this is how late that they could probably address, they get a rebuttal, I guess, if I have questions. Okay. I guess my main, one question is how late alcohol's going to be served, like, what's the latest, they're going to do this stuff? I guess, they talked about, I'm not sure who owns, they talked about the Cater, and they were the CEO of the Botanical Center. I'm not sure who actually owns that fourteen acres, that's one question. And enforcing alcohol, not leaving the park, is another concern. And the noise, I'm sure they'll have a band, how late that's going to go. I live in the condo closest to the river, and I can hear, I mean, when stuff's going on down there, I can hear it really well. It doesn't take much. Someone's playing their radio down there, or something like that. And then, I also concerned about trying to follow the map. I understand they're closing Robert Ray, but there's a trail that goes down the hill there, and that, I'm, is that, I guess I'm concerned if that's closing, that's still going to be a trail. I guess my daughter, wife and I, we walk down that trail all the time, I guess. It's kind of hard to set a good example for an eleven-year-old when people are out there drinking and reveling, and I'm all for Court Avenue and the bars, but just, yeah, that's my concerns, and that's it. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Okay, you got three minutes, or, yeah, whoever wants to finish up.
I have my staff member, Megan Luna, here with us. She's the guest services and facility manager, but prior to that, she worked for the Cater who held the liquor license in the facility. We sold alcohol when it was under the operation of Waterworks. There was beer and wine, and there was bars as well. It's very much a continuation of a very similar business model, just under a different operator. And if there's any questions regarding the liquor license or the previous operation, Great Western Catering held the liquor license for Waterworks during that time. There was questions that don't pertain necessarily to the liquor piece. There will be a pedestrian path coming down the hillside from East 6th.
Okay, so let me, if I could just ask you a question. If there's a pedestrian path, and if the bike trails are still there, can I get into the gardens and walk these gardens without paying?
The formal garden areas are fenced. We have said as part of our approval process on the master plan, in fact, the master plan changed in the approval process.
So, can you show me where it is? Because to me, I'm feeling like I'm being left out, so.
Well, that is not a part of this process, and if, we only have three minutes, so I don't want to talk about what was previously.
You have a question and answer, so you can continue.
Okay. So, there is a pedestrian access down this hillside linking to the public bike trail. The bike trail has been relocated as part of this agreement with the city, that it's now riverside, is ten feet wide, publican access that anytime it's outside of the fenced area. The pedestrian access from the East 6th Avenue allows people to come from the neighborhood and the condos and the school to get to the bike trail. We haven't figured out.
Can you show me where that is? I just need to follow along.
If you follow this white line here down to the bike trail, there's a little bit of greenery to show that it's a smaller trail, but that's how pedestrians would access the bike trail.
But that's not how they've done it, like this gentleman that talked, he said he and his family would come down and get on the bike trail.
That is the current pedestrian access. If they're coming down through the hillside, that is not the intent, nor was it ever the intent when Waterworks or the city was operating that. There's no formal trails beyond the sidewalk that comes down East 6th, and so we will be maintaining that there will be a pedestrian access coming down East 6th. Nothing's changed there.
Cindy?
Do you know what kind of fencing you have in mind?
We're going through the design development stage.
So, it could be like an open look?
And that's another group's decision and oversight, it's not this group's oversight, but we have to go through the design approval process and planning and zoning, so.
You know, I guess I can lament with everyone and say, you know, it's sad that it has to change, but I also have seen what's happened in the past, people don't support it. So, and the other thing, too, last time I was down there, I thought to myself, gosh, somebody could just come in and take something and just totally trash every beautiful plantings and stuff. So, I was thinking to myself, they should fence this, they should try to keep invaders out of this, I don't know. I was thinking that, and I'm sorry, it's changed. But I've been there numerous times where I've drank a beer or drank a glass of wine, and it's never been an issue. And I used to think to myself, why doesn't the city take this on? Because then they could be making the money instead of giving the money to somebody else. That was always my thought, when I hosted parties and events there and had to hire somebody from the outside to get a liquor license, so. I'm not totally, I get worried everyone about that.
Thank you, Cindy.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any last questions for staff?
I would have one question, and they can just nod in it. As the people requesting this conditional use permit, are you in agreement with Staff Items 1 through 6 for their, for the conditional approval with this?
Yes, the outside.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
That's quite all right. Any last questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, I wanted to clarify, because we're kind of going outside of the board's purview a little bit, but that's understandable because of things going on and changes. The council did go through a process where the P&amp;Z had a hearing about closing the park road, which it's actually not a public street, it's a park road through there, but it acts like a public street, so they wanted to go through the same process they would as if they were going to close a public street. And so, that was put on the P&amp;Z agenda and notified, same as we would any other vacation and conveyance of a street, and it went out to neighborhood associations, and it had a hearing at P&amp;Z, and then went to the city council, and the recommendation was received. Subsequent to that, then, this master plan process was presented to them as an informational item after the council had made the determination to go with another private vendor for the operation of the property, which the city owns, the question came up. It is the city's property. The operator is operating the property under the contract that's been referred to. The development of this site is still in process because of the type of zoning it carries. It requires that a site plan be approved by the Plan and Zoning Commission, and they are actually, have submitted that, and there will be public hearing on that on February 25th, I believe.
This is February 7th.
February 7th, I'm sorry, for the Plan and Zoning Commission, and that was put on the agenda, and those notices go out to the adjoining owners. So, from that standpoint, those matters about the physical development and access and so forth are going to be part of the site planning review of this, and so the Plan and Zoning Commission will be reviewing that, and there will be opportunity to comment at that as well.
Thanks, Eric. We'll close the public portion, go to board decision.
Well, Mr. Chair, Cindy had some experience here, she's been down there, you've had meetings there. I've rented meeting space here before during the business day. I think it's a wonderful place. I've brought people there from Kansas City and Chicago. They're surprised we have this place. But that said, even with, you know, potentially having this conditional use permit, there's a lot of events that go on down there that don't need alcohol and don't need liquor, and mine's not going to. But to see more weddings down here, to see more after-hours things, or even what the zoo did with Zoo Brew, that did not turn the zoo into a big, you know, get plastered and go make jokes at the seals. I really feel, and to go to some of the other people's thoughts, you know, today, public entities with public accessibility at venues, times have changed. We now have buildings at the state fair named after people. They were never named after people before, but apparently, for however you want to do it, whether you want to sell trinkets or sell food, or maybe draw different kinds of events, you've got to be creative, you've got to be constructive to keep your facility vibrant and part of your community. I think our job here is to make sure if they want to make this change, it's going to fit. My opinion is if they would keep the service area to the south of the service access road where it intersects the trail, use some common sense, which I have no doubt would be done. Remember, this is, nobody's brought this up, this is a conditional use permit. If we have problems with this, somebody's in trouble. Sue Ann finds out that, yeah, they're selling booze all over the place, and people are running around being crazy, come back to us. I don't want to see that. I don't think that will happen, because I think I see where we're trying to go with this. So, I would be in support of it with, you know, again, just trying to keep it into some reason here, and keep it in where their planned garden areas are going to be. So, just stay south of that road access.
And what about ours?
I don't want to micromanage the operation, I think as far as hours, you know, we have nightfall on the river, we have all kinds of events downtown, as one guy said from his condo, he hears some of that. I think to a certain degree, that's a good sound, to hear a community, to hear that there's some things going on. Now, if it gets to the point we got decibel issues, we've been there, dealt with that. I don't think we want to get into that, but again, all of that, I believe, would tie into the permit. I don't really want to micromanage every conditional use permit. If there's problems with it, they'll be pretty obvious. If we've got professional managers, and we've got some city involvement here with the property as well, I think that they'll avoid that before we have to dictate it. Just my opinion.
I'm not real comfortable with it. I guess I think we can do better. I think we can do better. I mean, it still is owned by the City of Des Moines. We own this, and it just seems to me that we're eliminating it for a lot of people, and I understand, you know, the zoo, I can take my kids there, and there's lots of other kids, and I don't have to worry about a lot of alcohol. I just feel like we're making it just into a real, pretty big bar, and that just bothers me. I just think that we can do better. So, I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with it.
I don't, I don't think we're making it into a big bar. The Science Center, I mean, you can get memberships pretty reasonable, and includes the Science Center and the zoo, and I'm assuming it's going to include this, you know? They're not very expensive, the memberships aren't, and it's a good way to support the community in all these venues. Just recently, down in the Science Center, they had some mixed master, I can't remember what they called it, where they were trying to pull in a younger set of folks, and they were going to offer some alcoholic beverages, and that's just kind of the way of the world. It's unfortunate. I don't drink a lot, but, you know, a glass of wine periodically. I guess I don't see myself going in here and have people stumbling around carrying a beer. I just don't see that that's going to be the issue.
And that's why I asked the question of the appellant. Now, if I'd come down there on a Saturday afternoon, unless we got a special jazz blues event, I don't think I'm going to see that. It's going to be like limited to that little terrace area. It would only be during the special events, which usually are probably going to be after-hours, or well-publicized and noted what's going on where.
And I think Mel brought up a good point. It is a conditional use permit. You know, they're going to be cognizant of that, they're, they, above anybody, want to make this work, and need to make this work, and they've got some community contributors, some big contributors behind them. They've been serving alcohol down there for many years. I, it's been, I remember ten or fifteen years ago, we had a birthday party for my mother, and we had beer and wine, so I don't know for sure, but I'm remembering that it's been there for quite a long time.
Brooke? I'm, my take is, I'm a very big supporter of what they're going to do down there, but I'm wearing two hats. I'm wearing a citizen hat and a board member hat. My questions and concerns from the board member's side is that they want all fourteen acres. I'm not comfortable with that, because I don't see how you could police it and manage it. I've been to parties, like Cindy, there's never been issues. The director drew that line where they want to start with, and the gentleman said, well, maybe we should condense it. That I understand. I just don't understand the entire fourteen acres. That's like a carte blanche, and I think it's going to be a problem for them, for them, and I don't want to see any problems. I've had, we've had, our families had weddings there, et cetera, it's wonderful. And the alcohol, I have no problem with that. I just don't understand the logistics of the fourteen acres is designated to be wide open, and you can carry your beer and wine all over the place. Having said that, I'm a little disappointed also that they haven't talked to the neighborhood associations and the neighbors, and that's something that this board is very, very big on, and I think the city is very big on, and this is a city piece of property. I can't really speak to the closure issues, it's not before us, but those are my concerns. Not that I'm not a supporter of the Botanical Center, I am a supporter. I just don't understand how they can physically handle the logistics of the service over that wide of area. They have a wonderful new vendor, Mr. Laval does a great job anywhere he goes, and I'm sure they're going to run the place one, wonderfully. It just, it just seems like too big of a commitment for all fourteen acres.
Well, down to my thoughts. I, in looking at this, and since they already marked this as an exhibit, I think if we can keep this under the auspices of what we're seeing in front of us, as what she called Plan One or Phase One, like Cindy says, and I've known, too, the sale and consumption of alcohol's been going on for quite some time there, where it would be a problem is if they decided that they're going to... Where it would be a problem is if they decided that they're gonna turn it up a notch and turn it into a booze hall and then we, then we start hearing complaints. And that's where we have the safeguards in for the zoning enforcement officer to bring it back to us. I agree with Brooke. You know, we got a great facility there. I'd hate to see it just kind of sit there and dwindle and not take advantage of it. So, if we can, I think if we can put together a motion that incorporates that Phase One only, and then if they want to expand on that, they'd have to come back here again and give us a sales pitch as to why they need the additional land, I'm a little bit more agreeable.
I think Phase One is even a little bit big.
Okay, now, what I was gonna say to you, now, what Linda's saying, I mean, you know, should have, if they, they raise enough money within a year, well, they might bump that garden out. I'd like to always keep them from going north of that access road. That's all natural.
I don't think they need to go up to the-
And I don't think they want to be in the parking lot or be in the production houses. I'm assuming the 14 acres is the physical parcels area. Is the entire parcel 14 acres?
It's comprised of multiple parcels, but yeah, the entire-
But relative, so-
Bound by the river, university.
So, I'm, I'm gonna guess here, an educated guess, that in principle, you listed the 14 acres because that was the general boundaries of the property. I don't think it was their intent or purpose that they'd want to have it on all 14, but also sometimes you open up the barn doors and then, you know, the horse runs out and we don't want that either.
Well, I can, somebody help me, what do they have now? I can go down there and buy beer and wine.
Yeah, right now, they have the ability to do that for the existing conservatory or the dome and then for the existing gardens.
During their special events, right?
That's preceded the conditional use permit requirement, so they've been considered grandfathered in, but through the expansion of the building, expansion of the gardens, they lose their grandfather rights because they're expanding and changing vendor. So, that's what forced them to come back to the board today.
Would changing the vendor have been enough on its own?
That wouldn't have been enough, the expansion.
But it's just time for good checkup.
Right, right.
But what if they just said, okay, we'll just keep it, we won't sell, we won't do anything different and not expand anything that we've done? Then they wouldn't need to be here?
They would still need to be here because they're revising the layout of the building and moving the restaurant, cafe, but if you wanted to keep it to the footprint of the gardens-
I mean, can I, can I, I could walk in there right now and buy a beer?
I don't know about right now. I think, might be able to at their cafe, at the cafe, but-
When the cafes open, I don't know if they let you out of there with it.
Exactly, right.
But they could, I think.
If there's like, oh, yeah.
And also, Chair, we had a neighbor that didn't address the board earlier. She feels when the introduction of phases was brought up, she wants to be able to address that, so I'll leave it up to you if you want to reopen the hearing for her to make a comment.
Hate to fall on her bad side, so if she, normally, you're, you're, you're okay?
I don't, I don't know what phase it was.
Well, we don't know either. We just know that the initial go-around, they called Phase One. We don't know if there's a Phase Two or Phase Three.
I believe Phase One was that black line.
Yeah, but I don't know if there's-
And if they raised enough money, they would do the other garden areas shown in the master plan.
Yeah, I personally don't want to restrict them to Phase One and force them to go back. I'd rather just say to garden areas because they're only gonna go so far.
Yes, and just limit it though, still, I don't think you'll ever build garden areas up to the north beyond the service road. And even, even if you'd want to do that, then I'd start to say, all right, now we are getting too close up to the playground, schoolyard and other thing. If they keep it between there and they keep it out of the parking lot-
That's good.
I don't want to, again, I don't want to try to micromanage it.
And that addresses Brooke's issue.
Yes, but again, that 14 acres, I'm guessing, was in principle, not in purpose or fact of where they wanted to serve.
May I add one question?
You have to come up here first. No, no, it's-
You're allowing that, Mr. Chair?
Mine just as well.
You're a nice guy.
Does this include live bands?
Before you can ask, I have to know who you are and where you live.
Lorraine Eldridge, Capital Park.
What's your address?
1115 Fremont.
Okay.
My serial number.
You're not a prisoner of war yet, so.
What?
Even better.
Your question is?
Well, it came up somewhere about noise. Will this include live bands outdoors?
That question has been, Ben, are there gonna be live bands?
We, we don't have any on the schedule outside right now, but we have events every Sunday in January, February and-
Inside.
Inside, yeah.
I'm talking about outside.
On January, February, I'd be impressed if they could do it outside.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, since it's been put out on the table, can we ask Bert how sound relates to our purview here? Would, would they need our approval to have that?
Yeah, we want to get a good decision.
Our recommendation was just the standard and this would apply whether we said it or not, but just they comply with the noise control ordinance. If they-
Right, okay. So, if there was a big noise problem, there'd be an avenue to deal with that.
And if they do have outside speakers or amplified music, they would have to get sound permits for those events through the permit center.
Okay.
All right, we'll close the public portion once more and go back to board decision. Everybody's got ideas. How about if we put one motion on the floor and see where it goes?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Point of order in terms of allowing her to come back up, you might offer the applicant chance for rebuttal. I'm not sure they want one, I'm just asking.
I know, really, she just asked a question, so.
Okay.
I, I mean, I mean, if you want, whatever Eric is saying, if you're comfortable where you're at, she just asked a question, but in a point of order, you, you're allowed to get rebuttal in on that. You're good? All right. Thanks, Eric.
I just want to make sure.
I'm glad you did. Hate to have somebody come back and say we did something wrong, you know?
Yeah, I've not seen where it's going, so I noticed it.
We're kind of fluid.
I'd like to move staff and add the amendment that alcoholic beverages are allowed within the garden areas.
And that shall remain south of the service road and not in the parking lot?
I consider the facility a garden area, but, you know, the facility, anything that's a garden area, the facility, all the gardens, the outdoor gardens, the indoor gardens. What would not be included? The parking lot essentially and past the horseshoe area there.
But, but, but we'd have to include that because if they want to build garden areas all the way up to the north, a prairie could be a garden area in a way. It's a limited inbound garden area. I, I just want to say we just keep the service south of the access road.
And that would encompass all the garden-
And, and outside of the parking lot, no tailgating weekends.
Oh, no.
It's not Ames.
Okay. You good with that amendment? I think that it's same thing.
Okay, so, so I'll second it with the friendly amendment that those, all the service areas will be south of the access road and shall not be in the parking lot area.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Good job, folks. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries four to one. Thank you, Marilyn. Okay, folks, approval of the minutes?
What's the last item?
That's it. We're all done. Well, you only got two, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
But you came in at the right time.
Oh, it depends on how you want to look at it.
That's it, you don't see anybody flicking around except staff, so.
Okay.
Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting? Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye, second aye.
All right. Motion, motion carries. Any further business, folks? Great meeting. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all very much.